Good evening, we're calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Public comment on closed session items before going into closed session items. Before going into closed session items, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Is there any public comment on closed session items, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. We are reconvening to open session. Good evening, my name is Elva Gonzalez-Mares and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elva Gonzalez Mares y esta es la mesa de educación del distrito escolar unificado del Valle de Napa. NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La mesa de educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión regular esta noche, la que todos pueden participar de forma remota. Puede unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose language interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meeting are Paul Huertas and Isidra Mankos. May we have one of the interpreters please translate these directions on our English channel so our Spanish speaking families can hear the instructions?
Hola, buenas noches. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación en español. Para poder escuchar la reunión en español, pueden ir a la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom. En breves momentos va a aparecer un icono de un globo terráqueo. Cuando aparezca ese icono, pueden hacerle clic y escoger el idioma español o Spanish. Si ustedes están accediendo a Zoom desde su teléfono móvil, van a poder ir a donde pone more, o más, en la pantalla de Zoom y al hacer clic, escoger el lenguaje español. Esto les llevará a un canal separado donde van a poder escuchar la traducción o interpretación simultánea de toda la reunión en español. No se puede acceder a servicios de interpretación en español a través del teléfono. Tiene que ser a través de la aplicación Zoom. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Magaña.
She doesn't have a mic in front of her, Vera, but she did say present.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Kreiser?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Dooley?
Present.
Or I'm present, thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only due to COVID-19 shelter-in-place order. We continue in uncharted territory as we deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. As trustees, we have returned to the boardroom in solidarity with our staff, given that our school campuses are now reopened for our students. However, in order to ensure access to our meetings without any limitations during the persisting pandemic, we are continuing with online remote access via Zoom for the public and guests. I would like to thank our employees, our families, and the entire NVUSD community for how you have supported each other and come together during these unprecedented times. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California for the governor's order. I am going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Trustees and Superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present by video. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. There are two ways to make a public comment within the time allotted for public comment on eligible agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the raise your hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at NVUSD.org/Board. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, the last four digits of your phone number will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comment. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions of how to raise your hand by phone are available on the district's website at NVUSD.org/Board. In addition, community members were allowed to submit comments via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org up until 8:00 AM this morning. Public comment received after 8:00 AM, the day of the scheduled meeting, will not be read into the record. However, the public comment will be announced as received after the deadline and it will become part of the meeting archive as long as it's received before the meeting is officially called to order. For every agenda item, I will prompt the meeting participants who have joined us via Zoom for public comment. Please follow the instructions just provided when you would like to comment on an item. We have been called to order and conducted our attendance roll call. We will go forward with our agenda. Now I would ask trustee Gracia to report on closed session items, please.
Yes. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendations. Effective July 1st, 2021, the following administrative appointments have been made. D2A1, Alejandra Uribe to the position of New Middle School Language Academy Principal. D2A2, Ted Ward to the position of the principal of Alta Heights Elementary School. D2A3, Caitlin Estudio to the position of the principal at West Park Elementary School. D2A4, Lucas Orozco to the position of the Assistant Principal of Napa High School. And that concludes the report on closed session items.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. Dr. Masetti?
Yes, thank you so much, trustee Gracia, for that report. I do want to welcome our new Assistant Principal, Mr. Lucas Orozco, who's going to be new to the organization, so I want to welcome him to the NVUSD management team. And then I just want to congratulate Mr. Ted Ward, Ms. Caitlin Estudio, and Ms. Alejandra Uribe, who are currently part of our management team and are transitioning into these new critical leadership positions. We want to welcome you, congratulate you, and let you know that we're very proud of you and we're excited about your next step in the organization.
Well said, Dr. Masetti. Everybody else here is nodding and extending that same welcome. We'll now move forward with our flag salute. I'm going to ask our Assistant Superintendent Dana Page of Human Resources to lead us on that flag salute tonight.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is an announcement that this meeting is recorded for live streaming and archiving on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced, located on the district's webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for the public comment can be found on the district's webpage. We'll now move forward with our approval of agenda, but we are going to make a few changes here. We're going to pull item 1 to B. And also suggest that we move item I1A and item I2D before the staff reports.
Move to approve with those amendments.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Jankowicz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have our agenda and approval of minutes. This is approval of minutes of May 6.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep? Go ahead and say aye. Oh, you weren't here. Yeah, 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 sorry about that. I saw you hesitated, because I know you didn't have a mic in front of you, Carla. Okay, so you'll be abstaining. Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And you have one abstention with Carla. Okay, and then our recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have?
Yes, Ms. Gail Young from the Napa Valley Educators Association is here. Ms. Young, would you like to address the audience tonight?
Sure. Hi, I'm Gail Young. I represent teachers, counselors, and nurses. And I'd like to say congratulations to all of our new leaders. That it's wonderful to see new people coming in that are so excited about new positions. I see bright futures. I'd also like to congratulate the retirees, but I know that's another item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I see that tonight we also have President of NAPMS, Leslie Walder, is here. Ms. Walder, would you like to address community tonight?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Gonzalez Mares, trustees of the Board of Education, and Dr. Masetti. Thank you for having us here this evening. And I, like Ms. Young, want to add my congratulations to our new administrators in these wonderful new positions and to acknowledge retirees. Thank you.
Great, and I just noticed that some of those who have transitioned to the new positions are here. Are you okay with us providing them the opportunity to just address the board really quickly?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll start with, Mr. Bassinet, if you can help me out here. Ms. Alejandra Uribe, who, current principal at NVLA, who's been appointed to the New Language Academy. Ms. Uribe, would you like to address the board?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for this great opportunity. I look forward to engaging in a lot of different ways.
Great, felicidades, Ms. Uribe. I also see Mr. Ted Ward is here on the call tonight. Can you help me out, Mr. Bassinet?
Yes, he can go ahead and unmute.
Are you there, Ted?
Hi, this is Ted.
Would you like to address the board, Mr. Ward?
Hi, this is Ted Ward, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm really excited to join the other principals on our management team and learn from them and work with our students and staff and parents at Alta Heights Elementary School. And again, just really grateful for the opportunity, thank you.
Great, I see that Ms. Caitlin Estudio, the newly appointed principal at West Park, is also present tonight. Ms. Estudio, would you like to address the board?
I would. Good evening, Dr. Masetti and Napa Valley Board of Education trustees. This is such an honor. I thank you so much for appointing me. I look forward to serving the community, staff, families, and students of the West Park Elementary School. This is such an honor and a dream come true. Thank you.
And I also see that our new hire, who's joining us from elsewhere, and Mr. Lucas Orozco is here, so welcome to the Napa Valley Unified School District. Mr. Orozco, would you like to address the board?
Sure, a little surprised here, actually. Yeah, just.
How we roll here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, I am here.
We're glad you're here, go ahead.
Me, I just wanted to thank everybody and, yes, I am present.
All right, welcome aboard, Mr. Orozco. Okay, we're done. Congratulations to the new leaders, very exciting.
Very exciting and can't wait to see you all in person. All right, so now we are moving to our first item, I1A. So Dana, if you could lead us with this process? You'll come to the mic, just for everybody who's not here, you'll see what's going to happen. So we're really having quite a moment tonight.
I see green light. Is there a camera? I'll have to talk into it a little louder, probably. There we go, great, thank you so much. So, good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and the USD staff and community. It gives me great pleasure to have an opportunity this year to honor our retirees here in person while obviously abiding by public health guidelines. So before we go any further, I just want to thank the people who helped me figure out how to do this. Gina DeLuca ensured that we understood and abided by the COVID safety rules. And Cindy Gonzalez located everything we needed in this building and helped us set this up. Elizabeth Gonzalez assisted with setup and crowd control. Joe Bassinet and Jordan Michaels were our technology wizards. And lastly, none of this would have been possible without Norris Tregonig, who ordered everything we needed, created the slideshow you will soon see, collected the school memorabilia on display in the patio reception, and much more. So thank you for all of your efforts, because we wouldn't have been able to do this without you. All right, so on to our retirees. We had 56 retirees during the 2021 school year. And of course, you know, most of our teachers stayed with us the entire year and classified folks can retire anytime during the year. And many of them are here tonight to join us. And so our 56 retirees included both certificated and classified retirees. And our retirees represented every grade level, including adult education and various job titles. Many of our retirees worked in multiple positions over the years and at many different sites. They have ties throughout the Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa community. Collectively, our retirees have logged over 685 years of service. As we finish another school year, arguably the most challenging school year of record, we are celebrating milestones. High school seniors graduating and leaving NVUSD, eighth graders and fifth graders promoting to the next level, and our kindergarteners ready to blossom in the numbered grade levels. Like them, our retirees are celebrating a major milestone in their lives. What an enormous change you are facing where you no longer are beholden to your daily work routine or the ebb and flow of a school year calendar. In fact, if you don't want to, you don't even have to know what day of the week it is. You have the freedom to pursue new opportunities, perhaps a second career, a new hobby, travel, or serve on the school board. Or not. You have the leisure time to visit with family, friends, or reconnect with colleagues who have already retired and can't figure out what you were waiting for. Or not. You have earned the gift of time to spend how you want. Congratulations. We have a brief slideshow which features most of our retirees, so you can see how they have earned this privilege. Our retirees have given years, even decades, to serving students in the NVUSD. With that has come ups and downs, triumphs and tragedies, victories and learning experiences. A career in education in schools is like no other. Your work influences the lives of young people, who in turn grow up to influence the world around them. The care that you took and the time that you gave made a difference to countless people, and we are incredibly thankful you chose this path. As you set off on your next journey, please take our well wishes, deep respect, and profound gratitude for your service in NVUSD. Mr. Bassinet, would you please roll the slideshow which features some of our retirees who were able to submit some pictures and information to us? All right, thank you so much. We are going to go ahead and present the retirement plaques to those retirees who are able to join us in person today. And so I would love to have the help of President Gonzalez Mares. And, yeah, we're going to go ahead and, you guys can line up over here. Norris is going to grab a quick picture when you come on up for your plaque. And so let me go ahead and start with Julia Blanton. And turn and look over at Norris. Elisa Charney. Next is Carol Coolidge. Barbara Corner. Debbie Dietz. Maureen Eckert. Judith Flores. Maria A. Gonzalez. Linda Hamel. Nancy Nord-Kinagie. Miriam Ladrigan, Ms. Meany. Tony Louise. Lori Piambo. Lori Piambo. Stacy Posey. Maureen Ray. Maria Rodriguez. Lorraine Ruig. Roger Ruig. Donna Voorhees. Rick Underwood. Debbie Ward. Kim Wildman. And Patricia Wyman. Thank you, and congratulations to all of our retirees.
Right before we continue on the next item, we're gonna go back. So I did get excited and got right into the presentations here. But we do need to cover public comments on non-agenda items. So just queuing you up there, Mr. Bassinet. But before that, then I'll ask Tristi Grassi, but this is a portion where members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during this section of the agenda in as much as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. We'll start with Tristi Grassi to report if there are any comments that were submitted via email.
Yes, public comments on non-agenda items received via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org. The following public comment was received by electronic written format and has been forwarded and reviewed by the NVUSD Board of Education Trustees. Name: Will Becker. Title was "Extend Willow to K-8." Date received: May 24, 2021. And that is the total of public comment.
Thank you, Tristi Grassi. Now we'll see who is joining us and in participants. Mr. Bassinet, do we have any public comment?
We do. I'll go ahead and allow Julia Bowie.
Good evening. My name is Julia Bowie, and I'm the student president of the Project Lit Club at Napa High School. I'd like to thank the board for their support at the last district board meeting of Project Lit and our mission to get young people excited about reading by highlighting and discussing diverse culturally relevant books. Over the past academic year, Project Lit has been a space where students and teachers can come together to both share their love for books and talk about current issues. I found that participating in Project Lit has sparked more discussion about literature and arts in my life outside the club. Last week, as I listened to a new pop album with a friend from Project Lit, we found ourselves unintentionally connecting the songs to book characters. I don't think these conversations would have happened without the friendly, open attitude towards reading that was started in Project Lit. As the club continues to expand in the Napa Valley Unified School District, I hope that we continue to spread this love and sense of excitement towards reading. The second important aspect of Project Lit has been the focus on representation and discussion of current issues in the world. This year, we voted to read five different books by authors that might not have been represented in a traditional school curriculum. And each week, the students and teachers in the club have important conversations about our own identities in relation to the world. Project Lit has been a safe, respectful place where people of different generations and backgrounds can come together and share their voices. So I'd like to thank the district board once again for supporting this important project and the Napa Ventners for sponsoring us. Thank you to my principal, Mrs. Ready, for bringing Project Lit to Napa, and lastly, to our faculty advisor, Ms. Prophet, for supporting us every day. With the school's board's support, I am so excited to see how Project Lit will grow and impact the youth of Napa Valley in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Evan Versalini.
Good evening. June month is Pride Month, a time when we celebrate the diversity and beauty in the LGBTQ community and the struggle for equality and the existence of our community. I greatly appreciate the opportunity that we'll have to fly the Philly flag, but I'm here tonight to speak about how important it is that we make the LGBTQ community visible outside of solely June and especially in our schools. If you talk to members of the community, you may start to hear the same story, that a period of profound struggle culminated in a moment when they realized that there were others like them, that there is an identity for how they were feeling, that they can exist as themselves. The process of understanding one's identity and coming out is challenging under most circumstances, but it is exponentially or so if you are forced to do it alone. For many people, for many LGBTQ people in my generation, it took until high school, until college, or even later. For some, they never made it to that moment of self-acceptance. It is of the utmost importance, kids' lives are literally on the line, to have students feel supported by all of their community in all months of the year. We're not here to entertain you, to look happy and parade around in rainbow short shorts and face paint for a couple of weeks in June and then disappear. The LGBTQ community, especially the kids, especially at school, need to know year-round that there are others like them that they'll be accepted. That being said, it is necessary for us to continue the current board policy outlined in 5145.3 to ensure that, at a minimum, all schools fly the flag in June, but it is wrong for the district to deny schools that want to do more to support their LGBTQ students. Flying the flag year-round shows our students that they can exist, that they can be themselves at school, and it helps bring them to those moments of self and societal acceptance sooner. That shouldn't be restricted to June or to press releases that students won't see. Forty-two percent of LGBTQ kids believe their school administration is supportive of them. Forty-two percent. We need to do better. In the committee meeting last week, I heard, "We believe people know what they need." Indeed, it is an ally's job to listen and support if they can. With that support, someday, we will have a generation of kids who grow up without barriers to being themselves, who don't have those moments because they've lived their whole lives without fear and stigma. And the next step towards that goal is letting schools proudly fly the Philly flag year-round if they'd like. Thank you for your support and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Reese. I went back to my old habits. Mr. Bassinet.
Yes, it's Trisha Lewis.
Hello, I'm speaking today to ask the board to consider expanding Willow Elementary's Artful Learning Program through the eighth grade. The K-8 pilot program at Browns Valley and Shearer Elementarys was announced with a minimum of public discussion and apparently no evaluation of other schools. We are most likely to have a successful pilot if we place it at a school that already has an embedded magnet program which attracts and retains families. As an artful learning school, Willow has such a program. Arts integration is not just about giving kids a creative outlet. It is a different way of teaching that creates a robust culture of learning. Our program appeals to diverse families and forges connections across a range of backgrounds and languages. My wish to expand Artful Learning is not about my own child, but about embracing the program excellence that is one of our district's goals, instead of sticking to the educational status quo. To find evidence of successful K-8 programs, we don't need to look very far. Within our district, Stonebridge has been K-8 for many years by offering a unique learning model. Almost every private school in Napa is K-8. And right over the hill in Fairfield, we have Oakbrook Academy, a public magnet school which uses an arts integration program similar to Willow's. Oakbrook students range from TK to eighth grade, with grade seventh and eighth having been added in 2014. I spoke with the secretary at Oakbrook, whose daughter attended middle school there. She was happy to share several appealing aspects of their program with me. She mentioned that the Fairfield District offers several other popular K-8 programs in addition to Oakbrook's. The misgivings about K-8 programs, which have been expressed by NVUSD, have many creative solutions available. A limited number of classrooms can be expanded by deploying the district's existing portable classrooms. Lack of a track can be conquered by partnering with another school for extracurricular sports, just as new tech already does with Napa High. I'd like to have the reassurance that all possibilities have been explored by the board or a task force before ruling out Willow as a K-8 candidate. If it turns out that the Willow site doesn't work at all, what about extending Artful Learning to a subset of students at the River Site? I beg you to fully consider the options before making a final decision on this issue. Instead of trying to prove that a K-8 program won't work, let's be leaders and demonstrate that it does. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Norma Ortiz.
Hello. First of all, congratulations to the retired Napa Valley Unified School District staff, especially to Debbie Dietz, Marin Eckert, Kim Wildman, and Joanie Enos. Second, in regard to the progress reports for the academic school year, in the first two trimesters, there are several sections that have not, that have been not applicable because they were not covered by the district for various reasons. I feel it makes more sense, given that not all the subjects were taught, at least at the elementary level, to have teacher statements, declarations, and grades where they apply for this last grading trimester. Third, I received an email at 4:09 PM today stating that NVUSD is forming a 7-Eleven Committee to advise on potential district property reductions through sales or leasing and will only consider surplus property mandated under California Education Code Section 17388. Regarding this topic, I recall I mentioned during public comment on April 15, on the April 15, 2021 board meeting, where I proposed to lease River to a private school in the meantime, at that time, so it could generate some earnings and so NV, Napa Valley Unified School District, would not have to make the decision of closing Harvest. I also recall that that same day, I had requested, inquired, to get answers on what was or has been done with the Vintage Farm, Meantville, and the Mount George properties for the possibilities also at that time to generate some earnings, revenue if any, so NVUSD didn't have to close Harvest. What is interesting to me is that the new proposed 7-Eleven Committee was not considered or formed anytime sooner and prior to the closing of Harvest to determine and address the NVUSD surplus property items. I am still waiting on answers to my questions, and I am tentatively requesting to receive the public information that should be disclosed in a transparent manner, because this is one of the many responsibilities that rest on the leadership team of Dr. Masetti. Based on observation and what I have heard from the public comment participants and other related meetings, just in the topic of the Harvest closure, the aspect on the way things were handled from the NVUSD leadership team, the transparency aspect seems to be questionable. I sincerely hope we get all the information we deserve on these very important topics. And because interested parties and serving on this committee need to submit their application by 4:00 PM on June 3, 2021, I also recall I inquired regarding the selection criteria for the previous task force and the redesigned task force and that in at least another board meeting during public comment. And up to this date, I have not received an answer to my questions. Again, I am hoping to know by prior to June 3, who determines who forms this committee and what will be the selection criteria for the future 7-Eleven Task Force Committee. And fourth, I would like to know what improvements have been gained in this academic school year in regards to English learner programs and services and the English Lang EL Master Plan in the upcoming last meeting of this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Yes, next speaker is Diana Dorami.
Good afternoon, good evening. Okay. Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Masetti and staff. My name is Diana Dorami, and I have been a substitute teacher at Napa Valley Unified School District for approximately five years. I am here today because I was surprised that substitute teachers were not included in the stipend for in-person learning when I received the email on May 11 from Dana Page. But then to add injury to insult, we weren't even recognized during Staff Appreciation Week by, in any of the days, by any of the emails. Substitute teachers are on the list because we have school district emails. I reached out to Dana. I expressed my concern that we were overlooked, not just in the recognition, but also in being considered for the stipend. Substitute teachers went back into the classrooms. There weren't very many of us. They were unvaccinated. And they came in, and I think they qualify, and as the FAQ that was attached to the stipend said that we return, that was recognizing those who return under, quote, "uncertain and hazardous conditions." There was a lot of Q and A's on that FAQ about how it could be prorated, how the number of teachers, hours, et cetera, that was going to be determined. I don't think it's gonna be, would be that difficult to determine who those substitute teachers are, because there were probably less than 100, without whom the schools, I don't think, could have reopened successfully. Let me switch gears now from the Let me switch gears now from the people that were in person to those that were virtual. And what if that virtual option wasn't offered? Being a virtual teacher, and I've been doing this for over a year primarily virtually, I started back in May in another school district when this pandemic hit. And I just find it disingenuous to say that teaching from home or virtually did not support in-person learning because a substitute was unavailable, then who knew how to teach virtual, who knew how to teach virtually, then what in-person staff, such as an assistant principal or other employee, staff, teacher, would likely have to step in? Cecile Hodges can easily tell Dana and whoever else needs to know who stepped in, who did the work, who should be compensated. I don't think it's too hard to calculate. I think that this board really needs to think about it because I think you would want, I leave you with this thought. What would a day without a substitute teacher look like at each school who needed a guest teacher? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
That concludes a public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going back to the next agenda item, which is item I two D, which is the annual community advisory committee inclusion awards.
Good evening. President Gonzalez Morris, trustees and Dr. Masetti. Introducing this item is my favorite duty as the Executive Director of Special Education. Tonight, I am sharing with you a video presentation from the Napa County Selpa Community Advisory Committee, celebrating some of the outstanding work being done in our district to actively support the inclusion of students with disabilities. Mr. Bassinet, can you please play the video?
Welcome to the Community Advisory Committee Inclusion Awards and Multimedia Creativity Challenge. I'm Ginny Maywell, Napa County Special Education Local Plan Area Director. The theme for this year's awards is be the one. And I'm honored and pleased to open this year's award showcase with a special dedication to Samantha Coburn. Samantha is a Napa Valley Unified School District parent, former chairperson of the Community Advisory Committee, and has served tirelessly working with Parents Can, agencies, and committees throughout Napa County for years. She's a champion for families with children with special needs. Thank you, Samantha, for your service, dedication, and commitment.
Hi, I'm Samantha Coburn. This is my son Cedric Coburn, who disappeared out of frame. He's an eighteen-year-old at Napa High. This is my daughter today, Alyssa Coburn. She is a freshman at New Tech. I'm very honored to be presented with this dedication from Napa Valley Unified School District. When my son was born, it was very different to find out that I now was going to have a son with special needs. And by the time he was ten years old, I was sort of really in a pity party, feeling bad for myself, not feeling very accomplished as a parent, that I was doing the things that I needed to do for my son. I got the opportunity to go work for Parents Can. And it was with that that allowed me to get out of that pity party because the only way to do that is to give to others. I was really fortunate to start to be able to see lots of parents who were in the same boat that I was in and starting the journey of what it means to take care of this little being that you thought you might have had a roadmap for, but the roadmap was going to look very, very different at this point. Whether it being extra medical care that you didn't know about or special therapies. It can be a lonely road. And so that helped me move forward and become a little bit lighter in heart. Actually was able to feel more comfortable as a parent with a child with special needs because for a long time I didn't want to be known as that parent. And while working at Parents Can Hi-Bed, I learned about the Community Advisory Committee. My mentor at the time, Donna Arbios, was on the committee and I started sitting in on it and it was helpful because it allowed me to finally see the other side of the chair. When I'm sitting in those wonderful IEP meetings that we all sort of cringe about, you know, as we try to scavenge services for our kiddo. But the other side of the chair became real to me and I started to develop relationships with the different people and realized that, you know, the system that we're in is is it is what it is and everyone is really just trying to do their best and there is there is caring and love for our kiddos besides just us and sometimes we cannot have to be such a warrior parent as we learn about the other side. Other times we still need to be our warrior parent. But that was it's beautiful to start to learn about the other sides of things and then wanting to find a way that how do we push out into the regular world and start to recognize people that are doing these wonderful things and helping out our kids and it's part of our journey. It's part of that interaction that we get to have with other humans as they touch our lives and are sharing things in the joy and in the sorrows with our kiddos. I felt really lucky. I would just really like to invite parents to take a look at the time that they may be able to give out either to school district communities, healthcare communities, so that those organizations organizations can better understand your side of the table, but then you also get to see what they're working with and how how do we move forward with all of us then coming together? Because that's the real answer here. It's not just the healthcare system moving forward and understanding how to take care of our kids or the school district, understanding how to educate our kids, its parents, and the different communities coming together so that we can move forward and our kids can have the future that they want.
Two. One with special powers, one with extra powers. Both go to school together, united, creating a beautiful friendship, a friendship worth more than two.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Rosanna Masetti and I am the proud superintendent of schools for the Napa Valley Unified School District. I am so excited today to take a moment to honor, to celebrate, and to recognize incredible staff, students, and parents who are doing amazing work to ensure inclusion is taken care of on behalf of our special education students. Today, I want to start out by recognizing the recipients of the Student Leader Awards. All vintage high school students, Ms. Adriana Medina, Juliana Catalan, and Ms. Jessica Macias Bonilla. These young women have done an amazing job of taking time out of their busy schedules in order to make sure that our special education students feel connected, feel connected to other students outside of their classrooms. Thank you so much for spending time out of your schedule, reading to our students, connecting with them, and building relationships. That's true inclusion on our campuses. Amazing work. I also want to take a moment to recognize and honor the staff recipients of inclusion awards today. First, to Ms. Lisa Sullivan, who won the staging, reading, success award. Ms. Sullivan is a vintage high school teacher and she's also just gone above and beyond to provide an engaging and fun way for special education students to connect and build bridges with our general education students while enjoying fun, engaging literacy activities. She's done an amazing job of bringing her dance students into the special education classroom, again, building that bridge for our special education students to feel connected to the broader school environment. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for your hard work. I also want to honor Ms. Jennifer Williams, a para educator at Redwood Middle School here in NVUSD, who's the recipient of the Inclusion Honorable Mention Award. Ms. Williams, as her colleagues state, is relentlessly committed to our special education students. She's perceived as sort of the glue of special education teams. Jennifer leads by example and she does an incredible job of communicating in person and has done a great job of communicating virtually with our special education staff, our families, and our students, connecting them, advocating for them through effective communication and lots of advocacy. So thank you so much for being part of that incredible special education team at Redwood Middle School, Ms. Williams. Congratulations. Lastly, I want to recognize and take a moment to honor the winners of the Multimedia Creativity Challenge this year, which was themed and called Be the One. I want to first recognize our vintage high school students who were winners of both the first and second place awards. First place was given to Dominic Slaton, so congratulations, Dominic. And second place was given to Idali Fuentes. Congratulations, Idalis. Both of them submitted winning poetry for the Be the One Challenge. Great work showing your talent. And lastly, I want to take a moment to recognize former Community Advisory Committee Chairwoman and very longtime NVUSD parent Samantha Coburn. Thank you, Ms. Coburn, for your expansive work and commitment throughout the community, extending beyond the Napa Valley Unified School District from NVUSD to various community organizations, various committees, and of course, working in close partnership with the incredible organization that we know impacts our special education community here in the valley, Parents Can. We dedicate this year's award to you. Thank you for your longstanding commitment to inclusion and to the students in special in our special education community. I want to thank all of you for your commitment to our special education students. We are so blessed and so privileged to have young people, our students, staff, and parents working in these incredible roles of advocacy on behalf of our special education students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Colaruso and I'm the program director here at Parents Can. And I have the honor today to introduce this year's Community Hero Award recipient, Ms. Hilda Gutierrez. Hilda is a fierce advocate for the entire community. She has spent her life dedicating herself to service and advocacy. And so I can think of no one better to be the award recipient this year. We are lucky to have Ms. Hilda as part of Parents Can and the community is better because of her service. So congratulations, Hilda.
Hi, I'm Barbara Nimko and it's been my honor to serve as Napa County Superintendent of Schools for the last twenty-four years. Welcome to the Special Education Inclusion Awards and I wanted to start by recognizing our student leaders from Napa Valley Unified School District. They were very creative and very dedicated in their efforts to include peers with special needs. And they serve as role models for all students on how we want to treat other students with special needs. So thank you. To the special education and general education staff, oh my goodness, you've had a year. We have all been really challenged by this once in a lifetime pandemic. And you went above and beyond and then some in finding innovative ways to serve your students with special needs. So thank you so much for all the extra effort that you've done. For the student artists who submitted fabulous work and made it really hard for the judges to choose, we so appreciate the work that you did. And to Darcy Storms and Amy Barberi, the co-chairs of the Community Advisory Committee, thank you so much for your work and for masterminding this year's awards. It's not easy to pull together an award ceremony online, but you did it. And to Mr. Castillo, what can I say? Thank you so much for everything you did to put together this award showcase so that we can be together and celebrate the wonderful work that was done by students, staff, and everyone in this difficult year. Thank you and enjoy the show.
Hello, I'm Mary Lou Wilson, the superintendent for St. Helena Unified School District. And I'm pleased and honored to spend a few minutes talking with you about some of our employees. First, let me thank the Community Advisory Committee for honoring our students and our teachers who serve students with special needs. Jennifer Dowd is a fourth grade teacher at St. Helena Elementary School. She does everything she can to include special education students in her class. And in fact, recently, she had her special needs student direct a reader's view. This prompted him to just grow and learn and write and draw pictures. He created his own comic book. Peter McCauley is also at St. Helena Elementary School as a special day class teacher. He's so creative. He finds so many different ways to serve students and include them in every view at the school. During the summer and at the beginning of the school year, he was compelled to ensure that his students received services. So he began seeing them one-on-one as early as August of two thousand twenty. And finally, Mary O'Donnell, she's our special day class teacher at RLS Middle School. She too began seeing students one-on-one in August. She does everything possible and in fact, she's continuing to serve one of her students simultaneously on a camera while serving her students in the classroom on a daily basis. She's also partnered up with general education students to ensure that all students receive the services that they need. Our teachers do a phenomenal job and our students are incredible. Thank you again for honoring them today. Celebrations to each one of them. Congratulations and thanks again.
Be the one. Be the one to pick others up when they fall. Be the one who is kind to all. Be the one who inspires others to treat others like their brothers. Be the one to do kind deeds, especially to those in need. Be the one who stands tall and gives their friends a call. Be the one who goes the extra mile to make others smile. Be the one who treats others the way you want to be treated and all your efforts will never be defeated.
Congratulations to all the nominees and especially to the recipients.
We want to say that inclusion matters. Leadership skill.
Leadership skills, how to work with others that think differently than you, empathy. All of these things are what inclusion gives to all students, and these are skills that matter in work and life.
Our challenge to you is that as you think about next school year, as we return all together full-time, is to think about how can you be inclusive? How can you be the one?
Thank you, Teri Lynn Rossetti, for presenting that on behalf of the Community Advisory Committee. And what a wonderful video we got to experience here. And then hopefully soon, we will experience this all in person in the boardroom. But really, thank you all so much for that. I think it definitely took us through a journey of appreciating and definitely with a word inclusion in our minds as we go through today's meeting. So thank you very much. Ms. Rossetti, do you have any closing comments?
I would just like to congratulate all of our students and staff and parents who worked so hard to help support the inclusion of students in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we are now gonna go to the beginning part of our agenda, since we moved those items. And to go to item G, which is the reports portion, we'll start with the Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Would you like to start us tonight, Carla? Oh, we need a mic for you. Let me see. Let's see if that reaches.
All right. Just a couple of things from me. Happy Mental Health Awareness Month, everyone. I am a huge advocate for mental health, and I think right now our students are struggling a lot with it and just everyone really. So I think it's really important to acknowledge it. The month's almost over, but you know. And speaking of mental health, there's 11 days of school left, so cut down the days. But that's all from me. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Carla. Just kind of for the record, this is your also second-to-last meeting, I think, with us. So just another countdown. All right, we will start with the Board of Education Reports. Trustee Gracia.
Sure. On May 12th, I met with the Superintendent and Board President of St. Helena Unified School District. On the 14th, I attended the, 14th and 15th, I attended the Regional CSBA Caucus as a delegate Assembly Member. Or sorry, the regional meeting was the 14th, the 15th, and 16th were the delegate assembly. The 17th, I attended a virtual open house at Napa High School. And then on the 18th, the F&amp;T meeting. And then on the 19th, the Curriculum Committee meeting. And that's the extent of my report.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Trustee Jankowicz.
I'd like to, a week late, make a comment about Employee Appreciation Week. I was getting a morning coffee at Starbucks and was struck by all the artwork on display by the Napa High students. Coffee carafes as canvases, beautifully done, and each one was very unique. I particularly loved the goldfish. I was then getting my haircut, and a woman near me was reading a speech out loud written by a student that quite literally brought me to tears. It was beautifully written. It was poignant. It was wise. It turns out it was written by a 17-year-old NVUSD senior and was being submitted as a graduation speech. I was reading the Napa Register article about Addie Rhodey, an NVUSD middle school student who loves to read, started a book business on Etsy, writes reviews, has a Bookstagram account on Instagram and other platforms, and has thousands of followers. Read the article. It will make you smile. And then another NV, Napa Valley Register article about Phillips Magnet Elementary and their lead curriculum, Leadership Engineering and Art Design, and Jen Ellison's sixth grade, fifth grade class as part of their engineering curriculum. They're building computers, and as the article states, they work. These serve as reminders that every employee that works in this school district contributes to the success of our students. Remember to take notice, because then all that you do, the time and care you invest, shows in the words, minds, and hearts of our students. So to all of our employees, not only are you valued, but you are creating value in others. So happy Employee Appreciation Week, a week late. City of Napa, we had a meeting. We will report on that, a report out later. I too attended the facilities and tech meeting. I had the privilege of meeting with the principal at American Canyon Middle School this week. I requested the meeting to understand how a large, comprehensive middle school engaged their student community, how they created small, safe places for them to thrive academically and socially, and to understand the challenges and how they would respond to those challenges. I met with the principal and listened to her, what I considered very thoughtful, responsive, and strategic, her strategic approach to running the middle school. There is a great level of care woven into the decision-making process that allows students to have a strong sense of belonging. They have a restorative facilitator who really helps develop a common understanding with the student body. There's an advisory built into the schedule, community circles, wings, which are activities done through advisory to build community. There is an adult in every student's corner all three years. They have robotics and art and drama and music, and each child finds their peer group. Safety is a priority. Relationships are a priority. There are student interest groups and clubs that have a curricular match, and the students are empowered to create an exploratory, to create an interest group that again matches a curriculum. The faculty, parents, and students work in unison to create a very nurturing community with academic rigor and a... One of the reasons that I was so interested in going out, I had had a site visit a couple of years ago, but there's been so much dialogue about the efficacy of large, comprehensive middle schools, and can we create learning environments within these large schools, and what does that look like? I would like to quote Carlise's last comment to me as I was for my half an hour meeting that was an hour and a half. She said, "The last 15 months created an opportunity for impactful community growth. There was great articulation of understanding that developed in content areas and the students' way of thinking as they navigated the hybrid model. It was an unintentional benefit of the pandemic. I have such great faith in my students." Well, I now have great faith that large, comprehensive middle schools can connect with all their students. And I wanted to thank American Canyon Middle School for spending the time with me, and that, and community engagement continues. That concludes my report.
Trustee Mysler?
On May 10th, I had the pleasure of visiting American Canyon High School and speaking with Principal Crystal Lopez. I really enjoyed talking with her, hearing about how this extraordinarily challenging and different year has played out for her and her students and staff touring that beautiful campus. And I actually, as things go in education, you never know what's going to come down the pike. And as I arrived for my appointment, it turned out that Principal Lopez was just about to hop on a Zoom meeting because there had been some positive COVID cases among the student athletes. And so I was actually, it ended up being really interesting for me to see how that protocol, how everybody from public health and from the, there was an assistant principal and Principal Lopez and the public health nurse, and I think the athletic director. And they just, it was very seamless and smooth, the way they communicated and handled, you know, the discussion and the protocol about notifying the students that we're going to need to quarantine and also the other school that the two teams had played against, notifying them. So it was really interesting to see how, you know, careful and deliberate and seamless that process was. On the 13th of May, I attended the City of American Canyon Two-by-Two Meeting. We'll report out about that later. On May 14th and 15th, I participated in the Masters in Governance Course Four, Four Down, One to Go. This was Human Resources and Collective Bargaining were the two subjects of the sessions. And always really interesting and informative. On May 19th, I had the pleasure, as a Napa High parent of two choir singers, to attend the Napa High Choir Concert in person in the quad. It was just a beautiful experience. Everybody was masked and socially distanced in, you know, beach chairs and on blankets. And it just moved me to tears. The music always does, but the coming together in community in that way and seeing the way the choir members and their awesome director Duncan Cooper and Mr. Ruane, the director of the Vocal Music Workshop for Napa High, really persevered and prevailed and were able to give their students that gift of music all year long. And the concert was amazing, and they had, as Mr. Cooper said, only rehearsed for a total of three hours in person total before they gave that concert. He said, "Which is in a normal year, less than what they do in one week." And they knocked it out of the park, and of course, made me cry with Danny Boy and then the Old Irish Blessing at the end, as the sun was down and the moon was between the palm trees. It was idyllic and beautiful. So thank you so much for that experience. On May 17th, I participated in the Community Action Committee Meeting for Special Education. I'll report on that later. On May 19th was the Curriculum and Student Support Committee Meeting. On May 25th, I attended the ACMS African-American Coalition Meeting. I would like to just second what Trustee Jankowicz said about Principal Batallier and her staff, Assistant Principal Bobby Ruth, the teacher Anne Grant, is a leader in that group as well. They shared the winners of their social justice poster contest that Trustee Chu referred to after she attended the last, their previous meeting. And it was really moving to see all of the posters that were submitted. The winners were a pair of students, Laura Todd and Isabella Aranda. And they attended the meeting and spoke a little bit about their process. The theme of their, or the slogan on their poster was Women's Lives Matter. And they talked about why they chose that, that they had both experienced times when people had told them that because they're girls, they, you know, that they didn't belong in a certain situation. One of them was an athlete, she said, in a male-dominated sport. And they just made a beautiful, beautiful visual representation with a tree and women in the tree. And it was cool that they collaborated on it, that it was a joint effort. So that was an amazing project. We went on in the meeting after that poster presentation. Dr. Batallier talked about how, in part because of the work of this coalition, they had added to their SIPSA, the sort of specific goals of looking at the disaggregated data for achievement and discipline for African-American students, acknowledging that in the past, their suspension rates had been disproportionate to the percentage of African-American students at the school. And she acknowledged the importance of addressing and understanding personal bias and doing that on an ongoing basis. That it's not sort of a one-and-done thing, that it's something that, you know, everybody needs to kind of keep top of mind and return back to and recalibrate all the time. And I just was so impressed with this meet, with this coalition and the way they come together with this focus. It was also attended not only by Trustee Chu, but also American Canyon City Councilman Pierre Washington and a bunch of parents. And I just really think it's a great model for community engagement and, you know, a way to work on our, on our goals as a district to, you know, on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then my last item is I attended a presentation, God, last night, seems like a long time ago, on the history of Napa's Chinese community that was really interesting, presented by Rise Up Napa and the Napa Library by a historian named Cara Branzel. And one thing that came out of that presentation was a suggestion and a hope that we might, in the district, include educating our students about the history of various groups in Napa's history. And it was really fascinating to learn that really there have been Chinese community presence and contributions ever since Napa became a town in the 1850s. So I really appreciated that learning experience, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Wan?
Okay, I went to, on May 13th, I went to the meeting along with the Superintendent and Trustee Jankowitz with the City of Napa. And we'll talk about that later on. The day after that, I met Gail Young for Cup of Coffee downtown. And my former trustee, Tom Kensak, went walking by and joined us. And he was very pleased when I told him he was right about everything. And and particularly Napa Valley Language Academy. And, and I meant that in a positive way. And then I went home and watched a webinar about the May budget. It was just a whirl of gaiety. And then on the 19th, I attended the Curriculum Committee with some of my colleagues and Pat Andrews Jennings, and it's sorted other people from Admin, and I'll talk about that later on. And let's see, on 5/25, I had a short visit with the principal of Sheer and talked about how the students did with distance learning and making, and how the teachers worked to, you know, keep the connection going. And it's not the same, but you know, you do learn a lot about your students, you know, by, you know, seeing them on screen, seeing them. And I also admired the lovely fence, a very attractive dark chain-link fence, paid for by Measure H, the citizens, thank you, around the, you know, large playing field. I answered some letters. I talked with Laura Prophet, English teacher at Napa High School, who is the sponsor of Project Lit, and she appreciated, said she was really appreciating the new titles. And I too really appreciated the article about Addie, the student from Redwood Middle School who started the book business in COVID. Somebody did something productive. That's great. And yeah, and I too was at the meeting, was at the meeting last night about the Chinese in the Napa Valley. And yeah, I remember I used to talk to my students about how Mark Twain wrote about, wrote about how the Chinese are treated in San Francisco and didn't go over real well, didn't. I got a lot of people mad at him. But he was right to do that, and that's it for now.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
So on May 11th, I attended the Joint ELAT Committee of ACMS and ACHS, and you'll be happy to hear that over 25 students were re-designated, and many of them were on the honor roll this year. So yay. So that really shows me the resilience of these students. Even during this distance learning time, they're able to achieve their goal of being re-designated and really working towards, you know, their academics and their goals. On the 13th of May- On the 13th of May, I met with trustee Reiser and Dr. Musetti with the City of American Canyon. I'll report out that later. On the 14th and 15th, I also attended the Master in Governance Class, Course Number Four of the California School Board Association. And then on the 14th and the 24th, I listened in on the webinar of state budgets as it relates to MBUSD and school districts in general. And also on the 25th, I also attended the ACMS African American Coalition. And thank you for reporting out on that. But I do want to invite you to the Chamber Commerce at American Canyon and also City Hall where they will display many of these award-winning posters and the ones that were submitted. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Dooling?
So on the 14th and 15th, I also attended the Masters in Governance Course. You know, it was informational and, and it's, it's always good to see, you know, knowing what we do about our HR department and our relationship with the unions. It's always good to see how we fit in and, and you know, it's, we're in a good place and, and you know, right now with that. And that's, that's a a great trend to keep going. So and then on the, the 19th, I attended the Northwood Virtual Open House, which was a, a family art night where we did a, a group art project that was inspired by the art of Romero Brito, who's a Brazilian artist. His artisans is kind of a mixture of cubism and pop art and graffiti art. And he's commissioned art for the Olympics and various other major worldwide events. Very, in, in the art that we did was the Northwood Eagle and then a lot of the kind of pattern artwork that is, is typical of, of Brito's work. It was very well done by Principal Flint for, for an open house. And on the 25th, I attended Northwood's last ELAC meeting for the school year. And they had more parents than they normally do on a, on a meeting. And so that was, that was a good showing. They talked about star assessments and the LPAC assessment and how that, how reassessment, or sorry, how reclassification works. They talked about the promotion events for the school and, and informing the parents on, on how that will work. They had some fun surprises for the fifth graders. And they talked a lot about the, the next year and how the, the hopes for, for as normal of a start as we can. And then there were a lot of questions about how that'll work and, and how the, you know, what, what changes might be needed for, for, you know, compared to a, a non-post pandemic. It, it's strange, but there were a lot of questions from parents, but it was great to, to be a part of that. I was unable to attend the Facilities Commission Meeting. I had a County Board of Supervisors Meeting to attend at the same time. So and that's my report.
Thank you. A lot of great reporting tonight, everybody. Thank you. We're now going to go to Board Representative Reports. And this is with our committee. So starting with the Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
Oops, I'll report out. We talked about, the first thing was, well, we had a 20-minute presentation about Family Resource Centers and in particular On the Move, which is a nonprofit that aligns itself with schools to develop student leaders, starting in elementary and moving up. And I have a personal interest in this because I remember sitting in a living room, you know, around 2006 or so at the near McPherson when this, this was proposed, you know, and you know, they felt that there was, people felt that there was a need in the community. There are over, there were over 500 nonprofits in the Napa Valley and only three were headed by people of color. And in other words, there needed to be some leadership developed. By 2006, only 15 Latinx students had taken qualifying courses for the UC and CSU in a year at Napa High School. Again, the need was urgent and the Samuel H. Cowell Foundation is part of this. Now, this is not a case of people coming in and swooping in and being do-gooders. This program is responsive to the community which knows what it needs. And now 80% of the people who have been through, who have been through this leadership training, students do meet UC eligibility. And we have Family Resource Centers in McPherson, Shear and Phillips since 2008. And there's, Napa Junction is coming in 2021. Or if it's not already there. It, they also operate Parents University to help parents understand how school works. I mean, it's all very complicated now. Even before the pandemic, you know, there's, everything's electronic. There's just things that people need to know. And of course, language can be an issue. They helped 700 parents navigate distance learning. They help parents deal with challenges, you know, when they have meetings, they operate, they provide childcare. And one parent, and this was presented by Alicia Abdo and Susanna Garcia, but one parent Veronica Sandoval spoke about how her son's school performance improved so much so that he was named Student of the Month. And which is great because early success is, is very, is very important for children. When the pandemic hit, her son became very depressed. He struggled and the McPherson Family Resource Center was a lifeline. Her son did better. Her stress was reduced. The Holistic Youth Project helped 133 students and their families. They're working on Summer Bridge to develop a summer program to help kids prepare for reentry in the fall. They have a district ride referral system. Multi-tiered student support, 420 families engaged with it to help distance learning. And this is huge. There was $856,000 in rental assistance with 685 families with children helped. And it was, it was very exciting, you know, and, and I was just thinking, you know, how happy I was that the program was so successful and it was doing so much for our students. And they're going, and these kids are going on to, you know, mostly Napa High School and they're real leaders in the, in their, at the school. Okay. And then Matt Manning spoke about elementary progress reports. And I am not going to go into incredible detail about that because I don't have audio visual aids, but I can say that the progress reports will be more legible and meaningful for parents. David Gracia's attention to detail was taken seriously. Now we can tell the difference between an I and a one. Well, that's important. I mean, you know, typefaces are important. And it was not a good communication tool before, and now it's much better. The key is we want parents to be able to see progress. And 150 teachers provided feedback. We all, we, meaning they, also took parental input. And it features consistent goals across schools and fosters student engagement with the I can phrases in it. And yes, there's going to be a Spanish version. I have zillions more notes about this, but we really thought that this was an example of, you know, taking some, you know, constructive criticism and going with it and coming out with something that we can be very pleased with. And, and then Pat Andrew Jennings talked about expanded learning opportunities this summer, one-time money. We kept emphasizing that it's one-time money. They took input, identified key needs of the whole child. We're going to have tutoring, mental health, fam, family engagement, tier one training on differentiation. We want to increase library hours and we went on, there were, there was some editorial comment on how our, our library hours are currently pitiful to barely existing. And we have, we have, we do have needs that transcend one-time money, but one thing is we are looking forward to improving libraries. And Peter Hartnack talked about math and let's see, I've got math course, course pathways. We have a revised placement matrix for classes. Determine multiple pathways through the three-year math requirement. Determine the need for interventions in and out of the school day. This will be completed December 16th. Instructional practices and professional development. We want best practices for teachers based upon eight mathematical practices. We want to determine scope and sequence for high-quality professional development. That is especially key. This will be completed next May 6th. Alignment in curriculum. We want to develop the district lens for curriculum pilot and adoption using feedback from other groups. We want to develop key criteria, standards and pacing. Research and pilot a math text. This is extremely important. This will be completed spring 2022. The transition from middle, middle to high school is a challenge. It's always been a challenge. We want students to be able to move up to higher math at any point in their school career. We don't want people to feel trapped, trapped by a track. And, you know, we had a conversation afterwards about, you know, how much is going on and how much we want to accomplish. And we decided we're going to be meeting once a month for the next school year. And at the next meeting, we're going, are going to be AP scores. We also wanted to know how many students take enrichment courses at Napa Valley College? Can freshmen take a social studies course? If not, why not? And we are very happy about the expansion of the canon, you know, the books, but we want books in children's hands in the school day, not just the book club. And by the way, we think the book club is great. So that's my report.
Thank you, trustee Wan. I miss that, being on that committee. It's always really good to me. Now into the Facilities and Technology Committee.
We had a short meeting. The deployment of radios has begun. We consider geographical location and started with Silverado Vichy and Vintage. All high schools will have deployment in the coming weeks so they can utilize their new radios for graduation. All sites should be completed by the end of June. The rollout thus far has been extremely successful. We approved the 10 gig circuit and switch upgrade at the March 12th, 2020 board meeting, but due to the pandemic and a lack of resources supplied by AT&amp;T, we were delayed to November of 2020. We initiated the project at elementary and middle school sites currently. The purpose of this project then is to increase internet connectivity at all sites in the district from, sorry, of all sites in the district to 10 gig. Due to, as Mr. Bassinet said, to the internet of things and the rapidly growing number of devices on the NBUSD network, it was important to ensure that there was capacity and internet speed for all. The upgrade included working with AT&amp;T to install new routers at each one of our elementary and middle school sites. Our high schools have already been, been operating at the 10 gig speeds. AT&amp;T completed their installations at the end of March. At the February 27th board meeting, it was approved to upgrade the data center. So the sites now, all sites now have the 10 gig internet speed and we're, so we needed to upgrade the data center to sustain the entire network. That upgrade was completed on April 20th. And now with internet speeds upgraded at sites and the data center, our next projects will be upgrading the switches at school sites along with wifi. This will ensure a strong backbone internet for our students and staff. Chromebook refresh plan. The district plan was to move to one-to-one device ratio for our students. And with the pandemic last March, as you all know, this was accelerated. And we were able to reach our goal. Typically Chromebooks have a lifespan of three to four years. At minimum, we will need to replace 25 to 33% per annum. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jankowitz. Our report from Finance Committee?
We have not met.
We have not met. Policy Committee?
We have not met.
And Special Education Committee Advisory Committee?
Yes, we met on May 17th. It was the last meeting of the year. Terry Lynn Rossetti, our District Director for Special Education, who we met earlier tonight, and the presentation that she gave also provided to the committee the same presentation that we were lucky enough to enjoy at our recent board meeting about the journey that Special Education Department's been on during this year of pandemic learning and the particular challenges of delivering that quality special education instruction virtually. Just once again, appreciating so much the, the additional challenges that special education teachers and students faced with these virtual pandemic learning conditions. And want to thank them for going above and beyond and their creativity and commitment to kids. There was a request for suggestions for parent education topics for next year's training series. That's sort of where their focus is right now. The Parent Committee Chair suggested that teachers, I think this was the chair, co-chair Darcy Storms, said that teachers would benefit maybe from getting support and learning how to help special education students acclimate and feel confident in general ed classes. So going with that theme of inclusion, how can we provide support to our teachers in the district to help further that feeling of inclusion and that reality of inclusion? She also suggested that, and I agree, that both general ed and specialized students would benefit maybe from support in, in emotional and physical regulation strategies like brain breaks and body breaks as they return to class full-time in the fall. So those were good suggestions. Another parent in attendance requested an emphasis on trauma-informed care services, which I know is already on our radar here with Pat Andrew Jennings Department. To increase access and participation this year with the committee, we, they changed the time from midday to 5:30 and also added Spanish, real-time Spanish translation. And so, so that was helpful and we are always hoping and asking for, for more parent participation and hopefully parent members of the, of the leadership of that committee. Another sort of access issue that Terry Lynn Rossetti brought up was that the trainings that are coming up are going to be recorded to increase access. So that should be beneficial to parents who maybe can't make the particular time of the training or the teachers that can't make the time of the training, but are still interested in receiving the benefits of the information and learning. And then Pat Andrew Jennings added that the trainings this coming year will also be open to instructional aids as well as teachers for professional development and that we have dedicated funding to provide stipends for them to attend these professional development sessions. And then there was a parent question about the pullout supports like speech therapy this year with the at-home scheduling. The parent found this sort of difficult sometimes to accommodate the timing. But Terry Lynn assured the parent that all of those sort of speech and language therapy type pullouts will be taking place during the regular full day schedule next year. So that shouldn't be a, a problem. And then we did talk about the inclusion awards. So now it's sort of after the fact, but about the presentation and the video and the, the, the two poetry submissions that were so moving and I really think it was a great success. So I really appreciated my first time viewing that, the inclusion awards this year. And I think it's a great thing that we do. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Reiser. We are now moving forward with City of American Canyon Liaison Representative. That's trustee Chu and Reiser.
So I'll be reporting. So on May 13th, trustee Reiser and I met with the City of American Canyon Councilman Mark Joseph and Pierre Washington, along with the city staff and district staff. And Dr. Musetti provided an update on the school district. And Dr. Musetti provided an update on the school district activities for the reopening for the fall as well as summer school. And I think everybody was very happy about summer school as I'm sure everybody in the district is happy as well. And that we mentioned that will be full in person, no social dis, well, there will be some masking possibly. There might be reduced social distancing guidelines. Lunch is always an issue with large schools, which we do have in American Canyon. So that has to be dealt with as well. We shared our demographic report about declining enrollment. The city was on board this time. I know there's been discussions of whether American Canyon is still growing, but I think we're just holding steady. And one of the discussions was, we hope that the new general plan will include building of smaller and lower-priced homes that are affordable for families with children. The city shared their progress towards general plan that will be completed in January of twenty twenty-two. And some of that work include the West Side Connector, which will be near the new Napa Junction. The Watson's Ranch Development, which hasn't quite started building, even though they've gotten some approvals. Still waiting for that. The Oak Hill Development, which is actually behind the old Napa Junction. So there's discussions of how to deal with that and impacts of that community on NVUSD. And also they have an educational committee that's going to be, I guess, they must have had a meeting by now, which will basically talk about policies related to the education plan as a whole of the city, which doesn't impact NVUSD because we provide the general education for all students. But if, you know, we are part of that committee. There is excitement over the new Napa Junction campus. So they're really looking forward to the grand opening in the fall before school starts. And that we mentioned that the district is forming a seven-eleven committee that will start work in August. Talking about disposition of some excess property. And one of the things that I think both the councilmen and the trustees wanted was to make sure we have good, open communication between the staff of both NVUSD and city. So we want to formalize some written agreements about how to proceed in those communications. And it's just best practice anyway. So we're both on board with seeing that happen. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, trustee Chu. Okay, City of Napa liaison representatives.
We informed the city that the pride flag would be flown at all NVUSD school sites between June first and June eighteenth. Dr. Musetti updated the committee on our fall reopening plan. We at the time were waiting for the release of the budget and legislative language for reopening schools in the fall. We are assuming and planning for five days a week. There will be a virtual option, but one must disenroll from their school of choice and enroll in independent studies. We will strategize on school settings, cafeteria time, when we get the final guidelines for social distancing requirements. We continue to have declining enrollment, declining birth rates and a declining Napa population. We continue to have declining enrollment, declining birth rate and declining Napa population conversations with the city. We continue to stay on top of this issue and update on our demographer data. There have been about six consecutive years of declining population in the city of Napa and our declining enrollment commenced in the school year twenty eleven, twenty twelve. We anticipate a full SRO staffing, three regularly funded SROs and one from the tobacco grant as in previous years for a total of four, and we are in the process of finalizing that agreement. The Gray Haven Group home located near one of our elementary schools has agreed to hold steady at six occupants. We expressed our understanding of need, but balanced that with the importance of safety for our students and staff. We are still discussing the city's potential involvement with taking over and managing the fields. They currently make a financial contribution for the maintenance, maintenance of our fields. This would not continue if the transition took place. When there was discussion about the importance of access to a recreational facility and recreational facilities and what the future looks like for the city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jenkweks. All right, town of Yountville liaison representatives.
We have not yet met, but our discussions around YES continue to be very slow.
Thank you. All right, that concludes this portion of board representative reports. We are going to take a break before we continue with the superintendent executive staff and so on of the agenda. So quick five-minute one. Thank you, everybody. Going to now go to item G three with the superintendent and executive staff reports.
Great, thank you, President Gonzalez Manas. Good evening, NVUSD trustees and NVUSD community. Wow, what a difference a year makes. As May twenty twenty-one winds to an end, I'm grateful for the positive energy I'm feeling across all of our schools and at the district. I think the retirement recognition tonight facilitated by our assistant superintendent Dana Page and her team in HR and the inclusion awards injected me with another dose of that positivity. Again, congratulations to our retirees and thank you so much for your service to the students in the Napa Valley Unified School District. And I have to admit, I'm a little jealous. The month of May has felt like the beginning, middle and end of the school year, all compressed into one. As we were able to start to create opportunities on our campuses that are more geared towards usually the beginning of the school year. Kids are coming together in ways, you know, that typically happens at the start of the school year. And it's just been great to sort of watch. It's happening in a very compressed fashion, but I'm grateful that at least our students had some time to have those personal sort of community building touches in their experiences. We wrap up this very, very unusual year. Building community and reuniting in person as we start to experience the impacts of the pandemic lighten has been so inspiring and even emotional, but in a really, really positive, good way. I continue to meet with all of our principals one-on-one. That's my practice at the end of the year. I'm almost done with those visits and they continue to demonstrate excitement about ending the school year. They're very, very excited, as are their staffs. That's what they report to get lots of rest this summer. And then prepare to launch a very successful start to what we hope will be a very routine, normal twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. The optimism is breathing new life into all of us and to the benefit of our students here in the district. I continue to engage in our weekly meetings with Napa County Public Health. As we all know, the public health landscape is improving. Vaccines are being distributed at an accelerated rate. In fact, I just want to remind everyone that NVUSD, since the announcement of vaccines being available for students between the ages of twelve and sixteen, has partnered closely with Napa County Public Health and have provided clinics at Redwood Middle School. We have Silverado Middle School had theirs yesterday. And the next one at American Canyon Middle School will be taking place on June second. Again, matching up sort of with that age group that now is able to access the vaccine with second dose clinics being scheduled as well in June. The new guidelines for the school setting are anticipated to be released later in June, which will then provide us what we, with what we need to finalize our twenty-one, twenty-two reopening plans and communicate to NVUSD families in advance of the start of the school year. So stay tuned. There's a huge pivot happening in the state of California with the retooling of the blueprint after June fifteenth. It is anticipated that after that pivot happens sort of at the statewide level that the particular guidelines for each of the different contexts, i.e. school settings will, will, will surface after that. So we're anticipating that by the end of the June, we should have those guidelines, which will bring a lot of clarity to our work. But everything that we're learning about from Napa County Public Health is all pointing in the right direction. That the fall should look like a fairly normal school year with some, you know, tweaks and refinements. But again, full force ahead. We want our kids back in school, full-time schedule, five days a week. We're really, really excited about that prospect. Looking ahead to the next few weeks before summer break, we are busy keeping kids motivated and looking forward to our annual events such as the graduations and promotions, end-of-year celebrations at each school and yes, flying rainbow flags in honor of the National LGBTQ Pride Month in June. Lastly, I also just want to take a moment to thank everybody in the NVUSD community for their ongoing support as I continue to face my breast cancer diagnosis. I'm almost done with my treatments. I only have three more to go after tomorrow. It's been a very tough, challenging road, but I've been able to walk the path with strength, hope and a big smile on my face on most days because of the love, care and compassion I have received from so many of you. So I just wanted to give everyone just a really, really big thank you. It has made a tremendous difference in my life, both personally and professionally over the last six months, and it's been amazing to not walk the road alone. I want to wish everyone an amazing Memorial Day weekend, this long weekend, as much needed, as we gear up for the busy couple of weeks ahead. And with that, I'm going to keep it short because we still have a long agenda ahead of us. I'm going to turn it over to my assistant superintendents so they can highlight the important work each of them is leading within their respective divisions. So we're going to start off tonight with Mr. Rob Mangwala, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The California economy is far exceeding expectations and so are tax receipts. All indications are that we're in the middle of a B-shaped recovery, which is far different than the long, drawn-out recovery post the Great Recession. The governor's budget has a plethora of proposals for schools, including a five-point zero seven percent COLA for twenty-one, twenty-two, eventual full funding for TK for all four-year-olds, additional state funding for student meals and school kitchens, funding for expanded after-school programming, investments in educator workforce and to help build a teacher pipeline and college savings accounts for eligible pupils. While these are fantastic opportunities for students and families, the budget does not address the structural funding issues related to declining enrollment. For example, the state anticipated a decline in enrollment of about twenty to thirty thousand students for twenty twenty-one. However, there was for 2021. However, there was a drop of more than 160,000 students. In Napa's case, we will lose over $20 million due to declining enrollment over the next three years for our budget cycle. A detailed budget will be presented at the June 10th board meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mangwala. Next, we'll have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, Assistant Superintendent of the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Morris, trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Representative Magania. The Instructional Services Division is working to finish this challenging school year strong. School leaders are hard at work closing out the school year while planning for the next. We recognize the importance of creating a warm and welcoming culture next year after over a year of hybrid learning. School sites are making plans for a restorative start for our students as they hopefully return and most likely will return to full-time in-person learning in August. Later tonight, I will, I look forward to sharing with you a presentation on the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Jennings. Next, Ms. Dana Page, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Morris, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Representative Magania. I would love for everyone to check out the latest edition of Staff Spotlight, which features the amazing Carmen Aguayo, Head Custodian at American Canyon Middle School. She's a wonderful person grounded in her family and faith and an incredibly hard worker who leads by example. On another note and a sad note, as many of you know, former NVUSD teacher and union president, Harry Brown passed away recently. I never worked with Mr. Brown, but the reason I want to bring him up is that he has left a tremendous legacy to NVUSD that has to be acknowledged. Harry Brown was the NVEA president in 1985, the year that NVUSD turned away from an adversarial approach to bargaining and embraced interest-based problem-solving, thus setting the stage for decades of positive and constructive relationships, which we and our students in particular benefit from. Former Superintendent Dr. John Glazier, who did work with Mr. Brown, wrote a letter about him that ran in the Napa Valley Register, and I'd like to read just a small excerpt. "Harry was a leading advocate at that point for the importance of the association and district approaching their relationship from a mutual perspective of equity and trust. And he was explicit about specific strategies the district could follow to pursue that trust. When the district followed his recommendations, he made certain that those trust-building gestures were honored and reciprocated. Working with the executive board, he also carefully explained to the membership why they were considering pursuing an amicable relationship, reversing course from the mistrust of the past. He conducted a referendum on whether they should consciously change the relationship, and it passed solidly, cementing support for the difficult work that lay ahead." I would add that decades later, the difficult work continues. But thanks to Harry Brown's leadership, we continue to work on those problems together and with our shared interest in student success at the forefront. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Mike Pearson, Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Morris, NVSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide each of you with a brief update on operational services. I'm going to be deferring some of my time to the facilities and bond program update. But to summarize really quickly, the custodial, maintenance, and grounds, food service, and transportation are planning and preparing for a very busy summer, specifically supporting summer school programs happening between June 21st through July 30th. At least 15 of the 26 active school district sites will be used in some capacity during the summer months of June and July for summer school programming. Custodial, maintenance, and grounds will be working together closely to ensure campuses are maintained during the summer school programs for staff and students. In addition, there'll be a high degree of coordination between the three departments to make sure every school is ready for the 2122 school year. Food service will be providing nutritious meals to students participating in the summer school programs, and transportation will be making sure that all special education students who participate in the extended year of programming will be transported to and from school. And this concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. So next, we have the facilities and bond update.
Yep. Dr. Masetti, I'd like to introduce the Vice President of Van Pelt Construction Services, Kelly Jurgensen, who also is coordinating the oversight of our measure H bond program. So Kelly.
I apologize. I think I'm having some technical difficulties. I don't know if I can be heard right now or not.
Yes, you can, Kelly.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Trustees, Dr. Masetti, sorry about that. So tonight, we'll be presenting a video showing the progress made on the Measure H Bond Program.
Hello, I'm Mike Pearson, Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services for NVSD. In June of 2016, the voters of Napa County approved Measure H, a school bond, providing $269 million to improve and repair our schools. On behalf of the NVSD teachers, staff, and students, we send a heartfelt thank you to our community and voters for this critical funding. With 28 schools across the school district, many of which are between 50 to 60 years old, we are in great need of basic repairs as well as upgrades in technology, safety, and security improvements, and facility modernizations. During the past four years, we have made significant progress. Here's a look at what we've built, repaired, and provided for the students and staff of NVSD, thanks to Measure H. Keeping up with technology for more than 16,000 students is a daunting task. Measure H has allowed us to bring 21st century technology to every school, from TK to 12th grade. Today, every classroom is equipped with a large, interactive, permedium board, an instrumental teaching and learning tool. This technology has been more beneficial during the past year, where the front-of-classroom screen has provided a huge benefit for our hybrid distance learning and in-person instruction model. Bond funds were also instrumental in helping us provide every student in the district with a Chromebook during remote learning. Now each child has their own device to ensure ongoing learning, whether in school or at home. The quality of a school environment is critical to the success of both our teachers and our students. Given the age of many of our schools, NVUSD is constantly needing to repair and improve our facilities. Replacing our dated systems for heating and cooling, as well as roofing, positively impacts student learning by providing comfortable and healthy spaces. Additionally, we have replaced aging parking lots and walkways, while also giving many school sites a new coat of paint, which has greatly improved the aesthetics of our campuses. Measure H helped us make a big difference for our oldest schools that needed the most attention. Our first priority always is to keep our students safe. Measure H funds allowed us to install fencing at elementary schools, install security cameras across the district, and provided radios and state-of-the-art emergency communication systems. New facilities were funded to provide safer and upgraded learning environments. This included moving schools off earthquake faults and completing seismic upgrades. Snow and Willow Elementary Schools, as well as River Middle School and Napa, were all reconstructed into safer and more modern buildings. In American Canyon, we have nearly completed the new site of Napa Junction Elementary School and are excited to provide our middle school students with a modern, multipurpose space, as well as upgrades to the overall campus with exterior painting and landscape. We all know that good nutrition is an important element for students to feel nourished and ready to learn. We built a state-of-the-art central kitchen that prepares fresh and delicious breakfasts and lunches each day. Measure H is also funding new kitchens at most of our elementary schools as part of our award-winning program. In last summer, we replaced aging synthetic turf fields at Memorial Stadium, American Canyon, Vintage, and Napa High Schools, as well as Redwood and Silverado Middle Schools. Replacement of synthetic turf every 10 years is critical to the safety and playability of our fields. All of us here at NVSD want to thank our families and all the voters in the county for continuing to support our schools, which in turn supports our entire community. Most importantly, these funds are helping students succeed now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And yeah, that was, it was really cool to see all of our sites in there. I think I'm going to also check to see, Mr. Vassini, if we have any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment.
Okay, we are now going to move forward with approval of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Dooley. Vera, if you could take roll call, please. Yes. Say that again, trustee Water, H.
Sorry. I'd like to talk about H4F.
H4F, okay.
I have a comment too, trustee Waters. That's good.
Okay, so let's go to item H4F. Sprolling down. Okay, this is the renewal agreement between New Tech Network and New Technology High School for continuation of services. Correct? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's a relatively small amount of money, you know, in the grand scheme, less than $40,000. But I'm asking myself, why aren't they paying us? I've just, the relationship between the NVUSD and New Tech Network has always been, you know, kind of curious to me. And someone wanted to know why we didn't close down New Tech Network as an example of a small school. Well, you know, there are a couple of reasons. Like, one of them is, you know, we don't have lots of empty rooms at that school. I get that. But another reason was, it's the flagship school for the New Tech Network. And so I just started thinking sort of selfishly, it is. And actually, we have two flagship schools. We have New Tech High School downtown, and we have American Canyon High School in American Canyon. And we passed school bonds to fix one up and build another one. And they were built, they were designed specifically for the New Tech Network. And in fact, they are the scenes, or have been in the past, pre-COVID, of tours. People come, you know, they're urged to come and see the New Tech program in operation. And so visitors come on campus and, you know, are frequently taken around by students, you know, to observe. And that's all well and good. What does, but, and I guess it helps the New Tech Network, but I'm asking myself exactly, you know, not to be crass, but what is in it for us? It seems as if we do a lot of giving. We haven't finished paying off those schools, those school bonds. And I was just thinking, what, why are we paying? I mean, it's not made exactly clear to me, you know, what, what we, why we are paying for this? We are paying for the honor of being the flagship school, I suppose? It seems a little, I know that I'm, nobody's ever suggested this before at a board meeting, but I'm just, I'm wondering. I've always been curious about the relationship between, between New Tech Network and the NVUSD. I know that people who work for NVUSD have gone to work for New Tech Network. I know about that. That's all.
My question was, it's $37,156. And in the contract, which we read, it states that the program prepares students for raising graduation rates and achievement test scores, and increasing college enrollment and college completion. So my question is, does the New Tech Network provide the district with this data? Do we have, you know, the, the increasing college enrollment and completion data? Do they provide it? And if not, could we request it? It's contractual, so I would think that they would provide it. I have not seen it, so I'm just interested in having us provide them with that data, if possible.
Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, would you like to?
Yes.
Questions and inquiries?
Yes, and I think trustee Jankowicz said, Principal Miller would be able to provide that data, especially around, you know, high school graduation and, and college preparedness. I know one of the requirements of New Tech High Schools is that students do take so many courses at the, at Napa Valley College, and that does give them a little boost in terms of their, their graduation rate, I believe. The other thing is that this particular contract, I know that New Tech High School also has friends of New Tech, who are the ones who do the guided tours. And so organizations pay friends of New Tech, you know, a fee or whatever, to come and observe and do that. And that money does stay in, you know, to contribute to the, the school. And it funds a teacher on special assignment at New Tech that provides training and support to the teachers there as well. And I believe this particular contract pays for the use of ECHO, which is the system they use for grades and, you know, giving out lessons and sort of their learning management system. And so that's where that, the cost comes from. And there, I think there is the fee for the, you know, to be considered an official New Tech Network school, even though they are the flagship of the school, the flagship of the whole program that they wouldn't have to pay. That is, you know, that's, that's very unusual. I would agree.
Pat, would you like me to contact Mr. Miller directly?
No, I will contact Principal Miller, Susan Miller, she, the principal at New Tech, and she will, she will provide that information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just, I think to get to the spirit of trustee Waters' curiosity and inquiry, I think what I'm hearing you say, trustee Water, is that it was the founding school. It's a traditional district school, but the network was built on the concept of the school that was established here in NVUSD. So given that the network was able to build out itself based on that model, I think you're just, you're curious about sort of the reciprocal give there. So thank you for that curiosity, and we'll keep that in mind moving forward.
I also have one question on that item. How many New Tech Network schools do we have in Napa Valley now?
We actually, so aside from New Tech High School, Napa Junction Elementary, American Canyon Middle School, and American Canyon High School.
And they all pay this fee?
The only one I've actually seen the fee for is New Tech High School and Napa Junction. I'd have to go back and check around American Canyon Middle School and American Canyon High School.
Yeah, I also have concerns about the fee because when I went to visit Napa Junction, they actually mentioned that they're not, with the funding that schools are getting now, they're not sure if they can continue to pay that fee. And they were also one of the model schools that people would tour. So I also wondered, like, what, what, what does the school get out of being a model school for that network as well? And I'd like to see the data for Napa Junction as well.
Okay, we'll note all that. Yeah, Napa Junction has served for the network as a model elementary school. There has been some less success across the country with elementary models, and Napa Junction is one of, one of their successful elementary models. That is, again, a traditional school here in the district. So I think Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings is correct. I think the two that are kind of official, currently sort of official, you know, sort of certified by New Tech right now are Napa Junction and, and New Tech. Hi. And, you know, trustee Water, I think you know the history, that there was an attempt to have several of the schools sort of be branded and be formally part of the network, but that, that has not been sustained nor implemented with full integrity. So I think we're down to those two schools. But we'll, we'll kind of come back with that information for the board.
Okay, that would be great. And I want to, I just want to say that this is nothing against Principal Miller, who I think is an excellent high school principal. You know, this is, I'm just, I'm curious. That's all.
Yep. Thank you, trustee Water. Any other comments? Or other items on the consent? Okay, we did have a first and a second. So I'll ask Vera if she could take roll call, please. So I'll ask Vera if she could take roll call, please.
Yes, student board member Magaña.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Marins.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you, Vera. I will also ask if there's any public comment for any consent items. Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we are now going to items I. And we've already completed the retiree presentation, so we're going to go into instructional services on item I2A, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Presentation.
Well, good evening again. I'm excited to share with you our plan for expanding the Expanded Learning, Learning Opportunities Grant from the California Department of Education. Mr. Bassinat, can you put up the slides, please? Can you go to the next slide? There are four parts to the presentation this evening. First, I will share with you the funding priorities that, as given by CDE. I'll review the engagement process that we use to gather stakeholder input and identify the key needs that emerge from those conversations. And finally, we will finish up with an overview of how the funding is being distributed. Next slide, please. The California Department of Education identified seven key areas that were funding priorities for this grant. The categories range from extending learning time, extra tutoring time, training for educators, increasing mental health services, the use of learning hubs to provide a place for students to get extra help after school, support programs for students who are credit deficient, or providing academic service in terms of assessment and progress monitoring. And lastly, training school staff on strategies, strategies that address the social emotional health needs of our students. These identified priorities were the only areas that districts could use to allocate these funds. The CD, CDE also had additional restrictions for the use of these funds. Next slide, please. 10% of the funds had to be set aside for paraprofessionals. These funds could be used to increase hours for current paraprofessionals or to support current positions that might have been reduced due to budget restrictions. The focus of this set aside is to ensure that support for, to ensure support for English learners and students with exceptional needs. Additionally, CDE wanted to ensure that this funding was mostly used for in-person learning. So at least 85% of the funding must be to support expenditures related to providing services to students or attending in person versus attending virtual. And the districts were restricted to only that 15% for virtual, for virtual learning. And finally, this grant, the funding from this grant has to be expended by August 31st of 2022. Next slide, please. Stakeholder engagements determine the funding priorities occurred between January and March. During the sessions, I asked the question, what can we do to support students who are struggling academically, socially, or emotionally? Input was gathered from various, from the various district groups listed on the slide, as well as from a survey completed by students, staff, and parents. These stakeholder sessions inform the development of this plan, as well as our local control accountability plan that I will present in June. From these sessions and the survey results, we identified some key needs. Next slide, please. The key needs touched on the importance of supporting the whole child within and outside the school day. The need for tutoring support came up multiple times from parent groups. At the elementary level, the need to increase onsite mental health support for students was also noted. Finding ways to engage families who may not access our typical communication tools also came up as a need, specifically with our D-LAC. They felt that families who may not have a smartphone or may not access through a email or a website, that we needed to find other ways to engage with them. Also identified was a need to support teachers with tier-one intervention training. Tier one refers to interventions that occur in the classroom during routine instruction. A teacher, for example, a teacher would pull a small group of students to review a particular skill that students need assistance with, that would be considered tier-one intervention. At the secondary level, it was noted that support, the support and programs for students who needed more intensive tier-two and tier-three interventions was greatly needed. Specifically, for students who are significantly below grade level when they entered middle school or high school, there weren't, there, there aren't as many supports or programs that support their needs. And finally, the need to better support visual and performing arts and STEM programs that help to create a more well-rounded learning experience for students was also noted. Next slide, please. All of these fall under the umbrella of our multi-tiered systems of support, and they support the whole child academically, socially, and emotionally. The components of our multi-tiered system of support include a strong and engaged leadership, the use of evidence-based practices, using data to make decisions, the layering of a continuum of support, and the importance of strong family engagement. Based on the stakeholder input and aligned with our model, we developed the following plan. Next slide. Our robust summer program this year is one way we are extending learning time for students. This funding will also support after-school programs throughout the year and the needing staffing, staffing for that to happen. This totals around $2.1 million. The biggest allocation of funds will be used to accelerate learning and address learning gaps through the use or expansion of intervention teachers, upgraded technology, updating curriculum materials, and increasing funding for VAPA and STEM, as well as library books. That totals about $6.8 million. Next slide, please. After evaluating the student mental health provider ratios at all of our schools, so we had looked at how many mental health providers, in terms of the full-time equivalent, versus the number of students enrolled at schools, we identified that our elementary schools needed additional access to services. As a result, we plan to increase the counseling services at our elementary schools, as well as some increase at the secondary level. Working with On the Move, we are looking to add a family resource center at Snow Elementary to support the Southwest Napa community. And providing a place for students to complete homework and receive extra help was also indicated as a need by our district community. Utilizing $676,000 approximately for this purpose is essential. Our high schools have done an exceptional job of supporting students through the pandemic. But even with their efforts, we still have students who are, who need support to earn credits to graduate on time. So we have allocated $375,000 to increase the opportunity for credit recovery during the school year, as well as adding additional counselor time at the secondary school so that they can have, make sure that they are paying attention to the transcripts and making sure students are programmed into the correct classes, given the last year and a half of pandemic learning. Next slide, please. We have allocated $920,000 to increase the library hours at all of our schools, as well as some additional intervention support. As Dr. Mercedes, I think, noted earlier, at some of our elementary sites, I believe there, some sites only have maybe four to six hours of library time a week, which is clearly not adequate. So this funding would help to support the increase as we have students return to in-person learning, the increase of library time, so that students have access to the library during recess or lunch or after school. And finally, we've allocated $55,000 for professional, for professional learning, specifically focused on trauma-informed practices. We know that our students coming back from the pandemic may have experienced some trauma, and we want to be prepared, prepare our staff to make sure that they're ready to, to handle whatever issues might come their way. And that is how you carefully and thoughtfully spend $11.5 million. Next slide, please. Any questions or comments?
Well, one comment, I told you, it's one-time money.
It is one-time money, yes. I did not make that point, did I? Other than we have to spend it all by August 31st of 2022.
I know, it's quite dizzying.
Pat, when you address the tutoring support, does the tutoring support take place during the school day? Or is that something the kids will have to access after the school day?
In our sort of vision, it's going to be after the school day, because I think that that's where the need is. During the school day, if we're, there's some opportunities in the grant to increase, like, people in the classroom. And so they wouldn't necessarily get tutoring during the school day, but it would be after the school day.
Okay, thank you.
And will it be multiple times a week?
It's going to vary by school site. Each school site's going to get an allocation of funding to support after-school learning, and then they will be able to arrange it to make sense for the staff and the students that they have on site.
Okay. And, and can you clarify how students will be identified to be eligible for that extra support?
The, we will be using the, this spring STAR data as one measure to see how students are doing. When we met with counselors last week, actually, we were looking at students who may have had a pre-pandemic, had, you know, really, you know, good grades, or had a significant drop in grades, or students whose attendance significantly dropped. Like, those are also the students who would be targeted for support, either through, you know, some counselor outreach or after-school, you know, connecting them to some after-school programs.
I'm sorry, one other question, Pat, will we be creating a digital recovery program for secondary, high school specifically?
When, when you say digital, are you like an online?
Online, mm-hmm.
We currently do have an online program, it's called Cyber High.
Okay.
And that's what students use right now. And even as we are gearing up for credit recovery this summer, we're going to be offering two sessions of credit recovery. And the students have the option of coming in person or coming virtually, for your credit recovery.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to follow up briefly on trustee Waters' comment that, yes, this is one-time money, and it cannot be used to solve structural budget deficits that we have from operating expenses. So it doesn't solve the underlying budget problems that we have.
Yes. And I think the other thing that we were trying to be really mindful of is not adding a ton of additional staff, because we know that this is one-time money, and after August 31st of 2022, that funding would no longer be available for that. So we can increase hours now, and then, you know, first, the things that we know are going to really impact students as they return back from hybrid learning.
I have one more question. This is a clarification, and I had a conversation with Dr. Mercedes about this, about the summer music program. There was a parent liaison, and by the way, your parent liaisons are wonderful this year.
They are.
Well, I have visited, has said what a wonderful work that they've done, so I don't think we give them enough credit. They have been the ones who the, the community and the parents get to interact with first. So bravo to them. They brought up, one of them brought up a, I guess, a question about the, the music programs in the summer, usually, parents have to pay for it. And so I had a discussion with Dr. Mercedes, maybe I'll let Dr. Mercedes talk a little bit about what the district is doing this year.
Yeah, there's usually a nominal fee, like trustee Chu is highlighting, and in our messaging, and that's in partnership with the Napa Valley Education Foundation. In our messaging, we just kind of rolled past practice, which was to collect that nominal fee. Despite the fact that there's always scholarships available for those who can't pay the nominal fee. But it was brought to my attention by trustee Chu, and I spoke with Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings. And because of the one-time money this year, we're just going to cover that fee for, for everyone. That is correct, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings.
That is correct, Director Hartnik is, has worked with the Napa Valley Ed Foundation, and at some point between now and, and summer, you'll see an item come to the board for the funding, so. And then, and the thing is, they're NVUSD teachers who are doing the, the summer program with the Napa Valley Ed Foundation, so we're able to, to cover that.
Great, thank you so much.
I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Andrew Jennings, for your hard work and your team's hard work, and the integrity of your stakeholder process, and, and really, you know, instead of going top-down and deciding from, from the ed center what it is that everybody needs, you know, it, it has so much more integrity when you go out into the field and hear from stakeholders really what the on-the-ground experience and needs are, and it's really clearly reflected in your decision-making and choices that, that this money is being very wisely spent, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, it, it kind of follows from the one-time money reality. You know, obviously, a lot of these expenditures are things that we would love to be able to spend money on every year. And, you know, I, I I know that next month, we have our, our budget item on the agenda, so I, you know, there's certainly budget realities, but is there, I guess, through this process going to be a, are, are we going to look at what among these things are worth considering for kind of continuing beyond this allocation plan?
Yes, I'm, the plan is that we would be evaluating, you know, toward the spring, sort of what is really having dramatic impact on, you know, students and their, their academic achievement, and even looking at our, you know, strengths and difficulty questionnaire, the SDQ, to see if that's making a difference in terms of the mental health services, and then making determinations if there's some modification we need to make with our LCAP funding. But it's, you know, it's always sort of a, like, you have to cut something to fund something else, so that's what we would have to look at, like, what would we give up to fund this? Like, I think about something like increased library time, we know that that's a need at the elementary level because of the minimal number of hours, and we need to find a good, happy, happy place where we can continue to support that. And it's not so limited as the four to six hours a week. So those are things that we would look at and evaluate as we go through the year, and determine which things we really want to keep in place in some capacity, maybe not in the, you know, $11 million capacity, but in some capacity.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, so let's, this is our presentation, but I will ask Mr. Bassinet if we have any public comment on this item.
We do, we do have one hand raised, it's Norma Ortiz.
Hello, I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I was hearing Pat's presentation, and it would be nice to know in regards to the aspect of the English language, or the English learner proficiency aspect, how is, how is it being targeted? There's obviously, due to all the COVID situation, a learning regression, and there's several emotional needs, so how are those being supported in regards to our English learners and special ed students? Another aspect that I had brought up in one of the D-LAC meetings, in regards to the hotspots for our students, as we already know, there's a lot of students that are participating virtually, so back, back, once, when we had that meeting back in, in, in some time ago, I mentioned that I had passed through the tech office, and it, it had a sign where it said that they were out of hotspots. So I don't know if that And it, it had a sign where it said that they were out of hotspots. So I don't know if that was. That has been addressed. And also in regards to the summer school. With, with, with the summer school camp. I would like to also see, I mean, that's great, that there be more library support. And hours and more Spanish books. And also books that can address life skills to handle students' emotional needs, also in Spanish. I enrolled my daughter to the summer camps. The registration and enrollment, but I haven't received confirmation. So I was curious. I, I do keep on receiving email, well, back in the, a couple of days ago with the deadline that. There needed to be, that that information needed to be completed by such date. But I never got a confirmation. So I'm curious as to where or who I should address my, my questions to in regards to that. And in regards to the, the portion where you addressed that. It would, they would take the STAR assessment. To, to see their progress and who qualifies. So what happens for those that didn't take the STAR assessment? And another aspect is that I would like to see more growth focused. With the wellness centers in general. I don't, I don't know if you. If your team addressed that at some point or will address that in a future meeting. And one other aspect is that I would like more detail.
Mr. Ortiz, I'll, I'll give you a few more seconds just to finish your thought.
Thank you. In regards to the tutoring and intervention supports with the LCAP, LCAP funding. I would like to know more about the layout. And perhaps in a future meeting or in an email. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do I have any other comments, Mr. Bastinet?
No other comments for this item.
Thank you. We are now going into item I to C. Which is the introduction of supplementary instructional material for high school.
Ms. Andrew Jennings?
Yes, give me a sec. My computer just died. When I'm using. Thank you guys for being patient. I hate when this happens. President Gonzalez Mars, which item are we speaking on?
Yes, we're an item I to C. This is the introduction of supplementary instructional material for high school.
Yes, I would like to present this packet of instructional materials for high school. This group, this collection of literature came to us from Napa High School. They have worked throughout the last two years to. In what's called Refresh the Core and exploring and looking at the collection of literature that they use in their. English classes and finding ways to ensure that it, there's a diverse collection that's reflective of their student body. And it's in this effort that they bring forth these books for approval to use as a supplementary text.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, we'll open up for questions. We'll start with trustee Garcia.
Yeah, so after reading the book reviews and summaries provided in the board agenda, there's one book that appears to me. To be in need of greater scrutiny. But before I get to that, I wanted to say this was definitely an improvement. Over the last time books were brought to the agenda. So I want to recognize and applaud the, the improvement. We still have room to grow here, but this is definitely a step in the right direction. So well done on that piece. But back to my concern, based on the reviews provided internment. Seems like nothing more than political propaganda designed to denigrate our former president. The reviews for this book indicated that the purpose of the book is to associate the former president with negative connotations and label him a bigot. Horn Book Magazine said that this book is about, and I quote, taking on Islamophobia and racism in a Trump-like America. Bookless said, set shortly after the twenty sixteen presidential election. Ahmed's novel presents a chilling depiction of America in which US citizens allow themselves to be controlled by prejudice and fear. And succumb to the hateful rhetoric of a populist leader. If said reviews are accurate, then this book is unusable as statements against candidates for public office must be met with equal time. Presenting all sides of the issue per our board bylaws. I don't see how this book could be utilized in any course, considering there is not a countervailing literature that is being read at the same time. That supports the former president, thereby making it impossible to comply with the board's bylaws. We have a responsibility not to pass books into the curriculum that would potentially set our educators up to violate our own bylaws. It is poor practice on our part to allow such books to be included in the curriculum, knowing that the teacher who chooses to use this book. Would likely end up in violation of our bylaws. This action seems reckless at best and definitely not like good governance. Attempting to entrap our own teachers is a bad move. We need to set our teachers up for success and not failure. I will be reading this book to get a better understanding of what it entails. And hopefully we'll have more clarity when we revisit this matter in the future.
And trustee Dirk Garcia will come for action on June tenth.
Well, I'll read the book too. I'll be, I'm interested in it. David, you know. Just you're telling me that it might be risky, makes me want to read it, you know, and that's. You know, that's a good way to get people to read, to read books. So it's on my, it's on my list. You know, I would like to point out that, you know, nineteen eighty-four has been taken to be. An anti-Stalinist book, but. It's very easy to teach it from any sort of angle, you know, excess is on the right or left. And. I just want, lest people think that my friends at Napa High School, all they did was teach literature. Created by people who were pasty, white and dead before the turn of the last century. Like in the nineteenth century, I just want to read some of the titles that by living authors that have been approved by this school district. Zoot Suit by Luis Valdez, How the Garcia Girls Got Their Accent by Julia Alvarez, which is the. Which is, you know, a prequel to one of the books on this list. House on Mango Street by Sandra Cisneros, Love Medicine by Louise Erdrich, Joy Luck Club by Amy Tan. Like Water for Chocolate, Laura Escovell, Not to Mention, Black Boy by, now, those are all living authors. Not to mention Black Boy by Richard Wright, Beloved by Toni Morrison, I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings by Maya Angelou. Their Eyes Were Watching God, Zora Neale Hurston, Raised in the Sun. By Lorraine Hansberry, Invisible Man by Ralph Ellison and Fences by August Wilson. And all these books are available. I have no idea if they're. If teachers are given time to teach them these days or if the exigencies of text, test preparation. Pushed them out of the way the last five years, but they're there, you know, we've got them. You know, we're not that hidebound, but I have read a couple of these books in particular. I really enjoyed There There by Tommy Orange. But I'm going to read a couple more before they come back to us.
I've read each of the book descriptions. And what I found interesting is that the following issues emerged in the reviews. There were a wide array of perspectives and thoughtful reflections of black teens. As they said, razor sharp duality and utter contradiction of citizenship, colonization, institutional racism. Cultural context, self-invention, politics, personal growth, social and racial justice, diversity. Pursuit of freedom, perception of one's place in the world, lifelong curiosity, passion, humility, fractured families, isolation. OCD, I, I need to read that one. Immigration, education and its power. I mean, the list goes on. These, this list represents a wide array of relevant stories that need to be told. Books have the power to change or reinforce how we feel about the world, and this is the start of many meaningful conversations to be had by our students. Good work by the committee. I personally disordered There There and the Girl with the Louding Voice, and I look forward to reading alongside our students. Pat, I do have a question. Are these books going to be incorporated into the curriculum or are they supplemental by choice?
They are supplemental, just as an addition. So I mean, the, the idea is that when Napa High did their sort of assessment of the. The, the books that were available to, to choose from as a teacher was, you know, they have several themes that they're, that they, that they use. In each grade level. And so there's a collection of books that go with each of these themes or topics. And so this adds to that collection that teachers can use. So it's supplementary in that nature at the high school level. It's, it's not typically that there's like core content that every teacher uses at the high school level.
I do want to note that it wouldn't be a violation of our policies if the, if Mr. Trump is not a current political candidate. It's a fair point to, to kind of look at the. Value that, that, that and any of these books would provide to the curriculum, but I wanted to make that note.
Yeah, that was my question too, whether in fact it did, because he, you know, I agree about making sure that. It's currently not a candidate. So I was just processing that right now. Good points made.
You know what? I was just thinking of something Peter Thiel, the famous libertarian said. He had a criticism of dystopian literature, a few, of literature about the future. And he said, why is it always, why is it always so negative? You know, why is it always so negative? How come there's no future? Anything's happy? And of course, you know. And one of my students used to ask that too, and I'd say, well, because one, it's my class and two. You know, I would say, I would say literature is about struggle. Legit, you know, we're not going to read books about people for whom everything is perfect. I mean, that's the kind of book you throw across the room in frustration. You know, we, we read about struggle. That's it. You know, this is, this is it.
A lot of stories in here for sure. Okay. Mr. Bastinet, do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, are we? We're not going to the item. To J action items, so J I, J one A. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four, this is supporting safe gun storage.
So I did want to talk about this resolution. I am concerned about this resolution. This resolution. In its own language rightly identifies that the behavior we are trying to change is already illegal. I'm not sure what we are hoping to accomplish with this resolution. If people are already breaking the law, I don't see how our saying that they shouldn't break the law is going to change anything. We as a school district have no power to enforce any additional behavior changing activities. Besides what has already been done by the state and federal legislature. It appears that we have lost sight of the main thing by even considering bringing this resolution before the board. We need to remember that we are here for the main thing, which is the education of our children. I oppose this resolution not because safe gun handling isn't important, because it is. But because we are headed down the path of attempting to assess and assert authority we don't have and in areas that we cannot regulate. By traveling this path, it makes us look weak and ineffectual in the eyes of our constituents. I am concerned that by entertaining and possibly passing this resolution. We are going to open the door to a flood of non-school related resolutions, which will suck down the time of staff and the board. What is next? Are we going to pass a resolution encouraging people to wear their seat belts, which could be construed as related to student safety? Or maybe a resolution to encourage people to file their taxes, which could be construed as providing resources to students? In reality, none of these are school related and they don't have anything to do with our core mission or function, which is the education of children. I am afraid we have wandered well off the path here and are losing sight of our core function. Our job is to educate children and nothing in this resolution has anything to do with the education of our students around gun safety. This resolution is well-meaning, but miss, a misguided attempt to control the private actions of our students' parents. Which is not our function.
Okay, David and I did talk about this and anyone who's listening, they should know that. Trustee Gracia and I are very good friends and we enjoy disagreeing with each other and, and I'm just going to say. You know, Dave, I agree with you absolutely. Our duty is to educate children. Absolutely, that comes first. And I think we've spent a lot of time talking about it. We're going to do that. And, and I certainly respect that opinion. And as for people who are breaking the law. I don't, I'm going to look, look at people who are. This is a letter going home suggesting, just reminding people to lock up their guns. It's sort of like. It's a reminder. We're not going to barge into their houses. And in, I'm not even going to say that they, they are breaking the law because I think. This. These, just terrible stories that you read in the paper about people who, you know, they love shooting, they own guns. They teach their children gun safety and then they leave the gun out and a tragedy occurs. It isn't that they are willfully breaking the law. It's just that, you know, people get messy. They just, you know, they, they see. They see things and they don't see them, you know, they, oh, look. I didn't put the gun away. No, they're so used to seeing it there that it doesn't jump out at them. And, you know, to their amazement, a tragedy happens. And I agree that. You know, it seems as if we're. Okay, it's like this. If sending a letter home to the parents in this school district. Keeps one child from dying in a tragic accident, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for it. I'm ready to do it. Because I have seen the grief that has consumed this community when children, when we've lost children due to other sorts of accidents. It's, it's terrible. It's terrible. It, it, everyone is so wounded by it. So. And I know you, and I know you like kids too, David. I know that with your extracurricular activities, all the things you do. But that's, that's why I'm going to support it. And you know, just one, one child's life. Also, I'm going to support this. And I don't like telling people how to, you know, run their houses and how to keep things tidy and that sort of thing. But the, I just, one child. That's, that's why I'm going to vote for it.
Yep, go ahead, trustee Razor.
Thank you. I respectfully disagree, trustee Gracia. This is not a resolution that's about enforcement or regulation. It is about education. It's about disseminating information that could save lives. As the trustee that introduced this on the agenda and asked that the board consider this policy. I want to thank my fellow trustees on the policy committee and thank Dr. Masetti for considering the resolution supporting safe firearm storage. Information. The epidemic of gun violence in our country shatters lives every day. In these first one hundred forty-six days of twenty twenty-one. Our country has experienced two hundred and thirty-two shootings. our country has experienced two hundred and thirty two shootings of four or more victims. On Tuesday night, I participated in a Moms Demand Action regional meeting, attended by our Congressman Mike Thompson. And I listened as a beautiful young woman shared her story of surviving the shooting at the Borderline Bar and Grill in Thousand Oaks in November twenty eighteen, which claimed the lives of twelve innocent victims, including one of our community's own children, Elena Housley. Ten hours later, I awoke to the news of the latest mass shooting at the VTA rail yard in San Jose. Last year in California, one point one seven million new guns were registered. And as many as three hundred sixty nine thousand people went through the state's firearms background check process for the first time, which indicates that many, if not all of them, were new gun owners. This only increases the urgency I feel to do everything that I can to educate our community about safe firearm storage. To be clear, this resolution is not a resolution against guns. Rather, it is a commitment to doing what is within our power, within our sphere of influence, to prevent children from accessing firearms. I would hope that even the most enthusiastic gun owner would agree that this is a worthy goal. In supporting this resolution, we are acknowledging what our state superintendent of education, Tony Thurmond, and the California Department of Education has already asserted that school districts have an important role to play in educating the families of our students about the responsibility of gun owners to store their firearms safely and about the devastating consequences that can result from a failure to do so. After all, our central mission is to educate. And this resolution, as I said, is about disseminating information to our parents about this important safety issue. And it's an important public health issue as well. Our profound obligation is to keep our students and staff safe from physical and emotional harm. This resolution will serve both purposes. If we pass this resolution tonight, we are doing our part to educate the members of our NVUSD community about the critical importance of safe firearm storage in preventing gun violence, as well as the legal responsibility of every gun owner to follow safe storage guidelines. For the record, and yes, I will take any available opportunity to spread this message, safe gun storage of firearms means the following. Locked either in a gun safe or with a trigger lock, unloaded and stored separately from any ammunition. We have to assume that children and teens can find guns and we have to act accordingly. By passing this resolution, we will take an important step in keeping our students and staff safe. We cannot eliminate all risk, but if we pass this resolution tonight, we will take a concrete step that might very well save lives. We may never know what tragedies we will prevent by educating our community on this issue. But we do know that this is not a hypothetical danger. Current research on gun violence reveals that four point six million American children live in a household with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. Four point six million kids. These circumstances lead to tragic results. Unintentional shootings, suicide by gun, and yes, even school shootings. We also know that this risk is not hypothetical in our own community. Sadly, it is very real. In nineteen ninety two, eight years before I moved to Napa, a middle school student accessed a firearm and opened fire at Silverado Middle School, wounding two classmates and traumatizing countless students, staff and families. I know for a fact that members of our community have lived the tragedy of teen suicide by gun. And while this is not a safe storage related issue, four years ago, my younger daughter was out in the open on the Blacktop at West Park Elementary School. She was sent with a classmate to deliver her costume to the multipurpose room in advance of the spring showcase that night. When a gunman opened fire on neighbors and police and was killed about a hundred yards from the West Park campus. She heard the shots. She heard a parent volunteer working in the garden yelling at her to run. And she made it into the school office just before they locked the front door. She was ten and a half years old and seconds away from having to find a hiding place in the bushes or a bathroom stall to seek safety. Two years ago, Napa Police were alerted to a credible school shooting threat at her school just in time to stop the plot from being carried out. In my volunteer work with Moms Demand Action over the past three years, I have listened to many, many survivor stories. I have borne witness to the pain of the parents of children killed in unintentional shootings, of family members who lost loved ones to suicide by gun, when a period of despair became a permanent and irrevocable tragedy born forever by those left behind. I am profoundly grateful that River Middle School was not added to the list of names we all recognize, like Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, Sandy Hook and Columbine. But I have felt that feeling of fear and dread in the pit of my stomach as I began to understand how close I came twice to having a survivor story of my own to tell. Every time I see a story on the news about a teen suicide or a school shooting, I immediately ask myself, whose gun did the student use? How did they gain access to this lethal weapon? Sadly, I ask myself these questions far too often. Most recently, three weeks ago on May sixth, when a sixth grader in Idaho brought a handgun to school and shot two students and an adult staff member before a brave and compassionate teacher stepped in calmly and disarmed her. One common denominator in these tragedies is access to firearms. It's important to remember that it's not only those who are wounded or killed in these incidents who suffer. The victims' families, friends and peers and any witnesses carry the trauma of surviving gun violence for the rest of their lives. And even the threat of gun violence is a burden today's children bear as a matter of course, growing up in twenty first century America. Seventy five percent of high school students aged fifteen to seventeen cite mass shootings as a primary source of stress. A few months ago, I asked my daughter if she felt safe at school. And her answer broke my heart. She said, feeling safe at school isn't really a thing anymore, Mom. She's not being dramatic for effect. She's a freshman in high school and has already experienced two close calls with gun violence while at school. We must do everything in our power to change that for all of our children and for our entire community. Passing this resolution is a meaningful step in that direction.
Thank you, trustee Razor. Any other comment? Yep, trustee Dooley.
Um, I'd, I'd like to, to note that this did come as, you know, generally policies should through our policy committee. It was duly, duly considered by the committee. It was based on sample documents from the state superintendent of schools. And it's not the only policy document that we have in, in the district related to firearms or weapons in general. I think, you know, for me, I don't think we're dealing with a zero sum here where we can't, we can't. We're focusing on this item today is taking away from other aspects of our educational mission. I, I think we can send this letter out to parents and still provide high quality educational programming. You know, and focus on, on that as well. I think the, the, you know, as, as trustee water mentioned, the upside, the benefit here far outweighs the amount of, of effort that this really requires. And in my view, it's, it's worth supporting.
Thank you, trustee Dooley. Okay. There's still time for more comment, but we'll ask, I'll let me trustee. Student Board Representative.
Yeah, just to add on. To kind of what trustee Ryzer said about her daughter, I think majority of students can kind of agree with what your daughter said. I think going anywhere nowadays, it's like you don't really feel safe, but just with the amount of school shootings that happened throughout the years, like it's, it's really common to not feel safe on campus just for that reason. Like whenever we were, there's like a fire alarm or a lockdown, like the immediate thought, school shooting, like duck and covered, like do whatever you can to be safe. And topics like this just make me really emotional because just like Elena Housley. I think it's important to remember that it's more about protecting students. And also educating. And I think this resolution can do both.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Carla. We need to extend our board meeting. If I can get a motion on that before we move forward.
Sure. Move to extend to one.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley, student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Bassinet if we have any public comment on this item.
We do have a public comment for this item. I'll allow Alana Adelson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alana Adelson. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Alana Adelson. I'm a Napa, a Napa County resident and mother of two. My oldest will start kindergarten this fall. And you can probably hear my one year old, who of all nights has chosen tonight to not go to bed. So please bear with me. I want to thank you for considering Resolution twenty one twenty four, supporting parental notification about child access prevention or safe gun storage, following the California Education Superintendent's twenty nineteen request that all schools provide families information about the legal requirements for storing firearms at home. I commend you for considering joining the growing list of school districts that in an effort to uphold their priority to provide students and staff with a safe educational environment, have adopted similar resolutions. Thirty four California school districts and counting are now providing information on how to securely store firearms to families, including the Davis Joint Unified School District and school districts in Contra Costa, Alameda and Santa Clara Counties. Ensuring firearms are securely stored prevents small children from accidentally accessing the firearm and prevents older children from using unsecured and unsecured firearm to commit school violence or suicide. Scenarios that unfortunately happen every day in this country as we know all too well. Seventeen years ago, my sixteen year old cousin, Brooks, tragically died by gun suicide after accessing a gun in his home that was not securely stored. It is impossible to fully convey, convey the immeasurable pain and loss of a family broken by gun violence. I therefore urge the NVUSD Board of Education to adopt Resolution twenty one twenty four. Thank you for your time tonight and for making the safety of our children, families and our community a priority.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Elsie Erisman.
Hi, thank you. My name is Elsie Erisman. I am a parent of a Napa Valley Unified Student at, at Scherer TK. And I am thrilled that you are considering this resolution. Notifying parents of existing California laws around preventing unauthorized youth access to firearms is extremely important for school safety and public safety. Since the pandemic, there have been over a hundred thousand gun sales in California, almost half of whom are first time gun owners. Making sure every parent knows the current gun safety laws as well as best practices for gun storage is the smart and responsible thing to do. After all, knowledge is power. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Norma Ortiz.
Yes, as a parent, I agree that school safety is an important and should be a high priority. And it's always great to have reminders with this resolution letter regarding safe gun storage and in general, all the aspects that follow that. And it doesn't hurt in any aspect. So I do agree with this resolution and I appreciate the comments of Eve, Cindy and Mr. Dooley on this respect. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
There is no more public comment for this item.
Great, thank you. Right, that being said, we are seeking a recommended motion for this.
All motion.
So first by trustee Chu.
Second.
The second by trustee Razor. Vera, if you could conduct a roll call, please.
Yes, student board member Magaña.
Aye.
Student trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz. Trustee Jankowicz.
Oh, I said aye.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Trustee Gracia.
Nay.
Trustee Ryzer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We are now going to item J two B. This is a charter school facilities use agreement between Stonebridge School and Napa Valley Unified School District.
President Gonzalez Mars, did we skip J two A?
Yes, we did. Thank you, trustee Gracia. I scrolled a little too far down. J two A, yeah, it takes a team really to get this board going. So I appreciate mostly a lot of trustee Gracia's backup. Nobody knows this, but I'm saying it now. Yes, item J two A, this is Resolution twenty one twenty six inter fund borrow, borrowing.
Move to approve.
Second.
And first by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Vera, if you could conduct a roll call.
Yes, student board member Magaña.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Ryzer.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So yes, now onto item J two B. This is a charter school facilities use agreement between Stonebridge and NBUSD.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Jankowicz. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
Let me ask if I have public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet.
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstain? Great, thank you. Now on to item J two C, addition of Aries Analytics.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Water. Do I have any public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Okay, we're now to items J three with human resources, J three A classified calendars for twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three. With Human Resources, J3A, Classified Calendars for 2021, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment, Mr. Bassinet?
No public comment for this item.
Okay, Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstain? Great, thank you. Item J3B, Request to Hire Teacher Less than Fully Credentialed.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Item J3C, Napa Valley Adult Education Classified Employee Calendars.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Item J3D, Resolution 21-27, Elimination of Classified Positions.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. And Vera, if you could take roll call.
Yes, student board member Magaña.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We're now going on to items J4, under Instructional Services. J4A, Youth Cinema Project Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second, but before we continue, do we need? And, okay. So first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Water. Do I have any public comment on this item?
No public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstain or oppose?
Okay. So I just want to take a brief moment. I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings for working on this contract. With the Youth Cinema Project. We are very, very excited about this program coming to Snow Elementary. I'm a little biased. Your superintendent was literally born in Hollywood, California. And so I'm excited to bring Hollywood to the Napa Valley. But we also know that there's tremendous potential here because the Napa Valley does an incredible job with film. And so we're excited about this program at Snow and looking to its future. And how it can potentially connect to the work that happens here in the valley so beautifully. Around, around film and the appreciation of film. So being from Hollywood, any opportunity that we get to connect with Hollywood. We're going to take it and the founder of this organization is actually the. Famous Latinx actor, Mr. Edward James Olmos, and he is always very, very excited when a school district. Partners with the Youth Cinema Project because he, at this point in his career, according to my contacts, is just incredibly dedicated to making sure. That youth, particularly Latinx youth and youth from. Underserved communities have access to the type of programming that this is going to bring to Snow Elementary, so. He actually prepared a message for the school board and the Napa Valley Unified School District community, and I'd like to ask Mr. Bassinet to go ahead and play that.
Good evening, everyone. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that you're voting on having the Napa Unified School District partner. With the Youth Cinema Project. YCP is Twenty First Century Project-Based Learning, which teaches students how to make films from scratch. And helps them become resilient, real-world problem solvers. Some of whom may eventually be part of the entertainment industry. And all of whom are more likely to become socially and emotionally competent lifelong learners. From the beginning, the Youth Cinema Project produced outstanding results. But we wanted to be sure, so we had a third party. Stanford University Center for Assessment, Learning, and Equity assess our program. Stanford concluded that YCP was using research-based best practices and that it was so effective that it was, and I quote. "Changing the trajectory of diverse students' lives in ways we are only beginning to imagine," end quote. The Youth Cinema Project is one of the best things I've ever done with my time. And quite simply, it's my legacy. We look forward to working with your students and I hope to meet you in person sometime in the near future. And thank you for bringing this to your children.
Oh, wish she was here live, but yes. We'll take a video.
It's the next best thing.
Yes. Gosh, I've been a big fan of him since I was a kid, so really exciting to see this come to our schools and. Snow Elementary and then our middle schools, so.
I'd also like to. So close, so close. I would love to see the. Fruits of our children's labor displayed at the Napa Film Festival. I would love to be able to engage with those that are now involved in the film festival. For, to leverage the learning opportunity to involve them in our community. I think, I think there's some potential there, so. I hope this gets traction and we're talking about this for a few years to come.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. I mean, just to talk about art and in visual arts, there's also a lot of talented. Latinx people in our community that do filming either for business or whatnot, but.
To engage them at this age.
Yeah.
I think is just such an opportunity.
Yeah, and we got to see. I got to see the presentation at one of the CSBA conferences, I think it was our first one. And trustee Martin and I, trustee at the time, Martin and I took a selfie with Mr. Oval, so. We were already like a fan of this.
You were envisioning the future for NVUSD.
We were just like, can you imagine? But it just felt so like, like this, no, this, I don't think, I don't think, you know, it was like that energy of. I don't know if it'll ever happen here at NVUSD. It seems so far away and so impossible in some ways. And so look at where we are now, and so I'm pretty excited to, to have that happen, so.
And just to note, the contract is for three years. It's an investment for three years, so middle schoolers will take advantage of it in the summer and Principal McCormick and her team of teachers were absolutely thrilled, so we did sort of vet it for. Their buy-in, their commitment, and they're just really ecstatic about this planting some seeds for some programmatic visioning at Snow Elementary.
Absolutely. All right, thank you all. We're now going to go to item J4B, Recycle of Obsolete Science Instructional Materials and Special Education Assessment Kit Surplus.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
No public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Item J4C, High School Basic and Supplementary Instructional Materials Adoption.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment?
No public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item J4D, Agreement Between Napa Valley Unified School District and Care Solus.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great. Thank you. Item J4E, Removal of Surplus Library Books from the Napa Valley Language Academy Elementary School.
Got a question on this item. How many books are being removed under category three?
Good evening, trustee. I talked with the coordinator of library services and she said that they don't. They don't track like the number of books that are removed under any particular one of those categories. They just go through and they're weeding the library and removing books. To make space for the new purchases. So they don't really track exactly. Moving forward, if that's a request that's made, then that's something that we can do as we move forward.
I would like to see by category. Moving forward, that would be my request.
Okay, and then, and just as an update, I know we are, we are updating this particular form. It's pretty antiquated.
I look forward to the revision.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I think just to make it more than just trustee Gracia's direction, I, I, I agree that I think it should be. We should have a sense, not just generally, but. You know, and a little more particularity.
Thank you. It's noted.
All right, is there a motion for this item?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
We do have public comment. Norma Ortiz.
I heard about the removal aspect, but in regards to the investment, it would be nice to see. In the near future, probably possibly a form. For parents or even students to make suggestions on the purchasing of, or expansion of more Spanish books in the libraries. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So we have a first and a second. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. Removal of surplus library books from Bella Magnet Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by, excuse me, trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, motion passes, thank you. Item J4G. This is the Cool School Summer Program Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There's no public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. Item J4H, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Onto items J5, Operational Services, J5A. Maintenance and Operation Disposition of Equipment Assets.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item J5B, Maintenance and Operations Disposition of Vehicle Assets.
So moved.
Second.
Move by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. Item J6A, this is SPC number eighteen dot thirty-seven dash twenty, Contract for Vintage High School Gym Roof Replacement to Enterprise Roofing Services Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great. Motion passes, thank you. Now, item J6B, SPC number eighteen dot thirty-five dash twenty. Request for Inspector of Record Services at Silverado Middle School Campus Modernization.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item J6C, SPC number eighteen dot thirty-four dash twenty, Request for Special Inspection Services at Alta Heights Elementary School Campus Modernization.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, motion passes, thank you. Now on to item J16. SPC number eighteen dot thirty-six dash twenty, Request for Inspector of Record Services at Napa High School Glass Block Replacement Project.
So moved. Second.
I'm going to give this one to trustee Water. First by trustee Water, and second by trustee Gracia. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, motion passes, thank you. Items J6E, SPC number eighteen dot thirty-eight dash twenty, Request for Lease-Liase Back Amendment to Write Contracting and Campus Modernization Work.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Riser. Any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Now on to item K, Informational and Roman Report. Okay. And no public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There's no public comment for this item.
Item K2, Human Resources. This is the Quarterly Report on the Williams Uniform Complaints.
Still no complaints. Good job.
Good job. All right, so any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There's no public comment for this item.
Okay, now Instructional Services, item key three, Chronic Absentism Report. All right, see none from the board. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Now on to item L, which is Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Trustee Water.
I have a brief one. Tonight, we honored a group of retirees and I was really struck by a couple, three of my friends retired. I was struck by. Our HR Director's comment that it was. Six hundred and eighty-five years of experience that we're losing. And I doff my chapeau to, I believe it's Debbie Ward, who had over thirty years driving a school bus. Imagine. Imagine that. I am impressed and. And I just. And normally, when I hear, hear a number like that, six hundred and eighty-five years, I think, oh my goodness, you know, we're losing a lot of expertise. There's a lot of experience there.
and I just, and normally when I hear, hear a number like that, six hundred and eighty-five years, I think, oh, my goodness, you know, we're losing a lot of expertise. There's a lot of experience there. And, but as, you know, the years go on, I think, well, gee, does that mean we'll be able to hire back some of the people we've laid off? And I was, when Gail Young chided us, you know, at the last meeting about, you know, just, she didn't want us to rush and to vote to lay off people without, you know, making sure that we realized that it wasn't just a normal, I felt bad about that. I felt bad about it, and I was thinking, you know, I do look at every single name there. I look to see if it's anyone I know. One year, it was actually, it was a family member. I didn't tell you that, Elba. She did get rehired later on. People who went to school with my children, you know, people I know. And then some of them, I know their life circumstances and, and, you know, you just, we do notice, we do, we do feel terrible about it. It's the nature of school finance. It's the nature of dwindling enrollment. But we do notice, and, you know, it's, it's, it's heartrending. And I remember the first year I had to do that. I was practically in tears. And I don't know, I guess the pandemic hardened me a little bit, but I do feel terrible about it, and I do hope that we can hire back, you know, a lot of people. That's my hope.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Water. Anything else? Okay. Feature agenda items? All right, we're in our last, last item.
Move to adjourn.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you all. Have a good night.